Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. The date is Tuesday, November 8, 2022. This is a regular time and place for a meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. We continue to deal with the health emergency, so the board is using the WebEx teleconferencing format for today's meeting. So whether you have joining us by way of web or by the teleconferencing platform, we thank you for attending virtually. Those interested in making unscheduled appearances, please use the raise your hand feature online, and hopefully you've made contact with the clerk if you're on a teleconferencing. For members of the audience who filled out speakers cards, they will be taken in the order, they're received by the clerk, and she has your name when we get to that portion of the agenda. Each vote today will be a verbal or voice vote, so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we've introduced the item and discussion, there'll be a motion and a second, and then there'll be a roll call by district. So, thank you very much for everyone for being here. In order to establish the quorum, I'm going to ask now the clerk to please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Thank you. Five members present, we have established quorum, we will be able to conduct business. Thank you very much. I do not see Chad Fagundes here or online, so Mr. Hill, would you like to deliver the invocation today? Please rise and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please now your head in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, enlighten us as we meet and give us each clear understanding of the issues we need to discuss today. Give us clarity on our purpose and what we should accomplish. We pray for those who find themselves in the throes of war. We pray for that you look over our men and women in uniform and their safe return. We pray for our constituents of Kings County and that you bring water back to the valley. We ask these things in your Lord's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And now join me as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its people and to its stand of majesty and independence of this country.
Thank you very much. We're going to begin the morning with employee recognition and presentation of the employee of the third quarter for 2022, and Mr. Hill, you want to lead off the introduction?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board approved the formation of the Employee Recognition Committee in 1990, and every quarter, an employee is nominated for your board to consider. The committee respectfully requests that the board recognize and award the employee of the quarter with the presentation and a certificate of a check and the amount approved by the board. Today, we have Chuck Kenny from CDA, who will make his presentation for his employee of the quarter.
Good morning.
Good morning. So Tony Lees is one of our first points of contact for our agency and greets the public with a friendly smile and a warm welcome on a daily basis. Over the past 15 years, she's progressively grown through the ranks and taken the initiative to learn all the ins and outs of the department, including how tasks often interact with other departments and state agencies. Because of the skill set and knowledge that she has, she's able to assist the public with almost every inquiry, so that they are not only provided the correct information, but she does in a courteous and respectful way. Our agency has seen some turnover in personnel recently, and she's been one of the people that new staff goes to and is able to rely on her because of her knowledge, which has greatly assisted them in coming up to speed more quickly. Tony's contributions go well beyond the Community Development Agency, as she often assists other departments with coverage needs when requested. She helps to facilitate the employee barbecue every year, and the list continues to go on. Tony's heart of service is a blessing to our agency, and she is well deserving of recognition of her service and contributions. And so, she was recommended as employee of the quarter.
Very good. Any rebuttal, Tony? Anything? You have an opportunity to get back at Chuck right now, so.
This isn't fair. Board Administration, fellow employees, thank you for this honor. Shonda Jackson, thank you for nominating me. It's been a true pleasure working with all of you, and I look forward to many years to come.
We have a one-of-a-kind guarantee to be a family heirloom certificate suitable for framing to portray at your office.
Thank you.
We also have a couple of other items, a one-of-a-kind guarantee to be a family heirloom lapel pin. There is an item number on the back, but don't try to look for it. It's small, they're very small. And then for all of your help for the barbecue and everything else, we also have a chef's hat for you. You want to get down there? Excellent. Good job. Good job. All right. The next item is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Speakers will be limited to two minutes.
The first speaker card that I have is Richard Perez.
Very good. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Richard Perez. I am a Veterans Benefit Coach at the Kings County Library Veterans Resource Center. Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly about the Veterans Resource Center. So, with regards to the Veterans Resource Center, we are a resource to assist veterans and their families in getting connected to benefits. For example, we look at four area common areas that we assist veterans: employment, education, healthcare, and housing. So for example, if I have a veteran or a family member that needs assistance, say, filing a service-connected claim, I will ensure that that veteran gets connected either by face-to-face, telephone, or by email to like Scott Holwell's team, and make sure that they get that service. So, we are supplement, information resource for all the organizations that support veterans here in Kings County. Another thing that, another resource we do is like I just recently had in contact with an at-risk veteran in need of housing, so I utilized the San Joaquin Valley Vet, Nancy Vadel and her team, in getting that veteran connected for housing. And I think it's a great program to help veterans, especially at-risk veterans and homeless veterans. But one program that I really want to highlight is our Veterans History Oral History Project. Is anybody aware of that, ever heard of it? No, Scott has. Okay. So, the Veterans History Project, the United States Congress created the Veterans History Project back in 2000, and it was signed into law by former President Bill Clinton on October 27, 2000. This project was established in Kings County Library in April of 2016. Since then, we have interviewed over 30 veterans that spanned from World War II, Korean War, to our recent Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation Iraqi Freedom and Peacetime. However, we welcome all veterans who served to share their personal journey of military service. One keynote I like to highlight with our program with the Veterans History Project is we're the only county out of six counties who actively use and participate in the Veterans History Project. The reason I found that and I confirmed it, I called all those counties to see if they're doing it, and a lot of them are not doing it. If they're aware of it, they just can't do it because either they're understaffed or they just don't have the time. But I've interviewed people from Tulare County, Kern County, and I've met a veteran, a Korean War veteran, just recently. They came to, we met up at the Tulare Library, and it was a great interview, and it's a great program too for the veteran to leave their legacy for their family and be a part of history. So, thank you again for the opportunity to speak about our Veterans History Project. Is there any questions?
Good, thank you. Any questions? Very good. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. God bless you. God bless our men and women overseas. God bless our veterans and families, and God bless the United States of America.
Good job. Thank you.
The next speaker is Scott Holwell.
Good morning, thanks for being here.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Scott Holwell, Veteran Services Office. Rich, thanks for showing up today, and where'd you disappear to? Wow, he got away quick.
Yeah, you gotta be quick.
He got away quick, so just for a quick.
He works on the library, so he's got to be quiet.
He is. Slipped out quietly, the librarian was looking for him. They, that project over there, the Veterans Resource Center, is a partnership between CalVet and the State Library System and the county libraries, and they do a great service for us over there. When they first stood up, they needed a lot of help over there. We tried to provide them with some work studies over there, and then supervision was an issue with them. So they've started their own work-study program, but they do a great job referring veterans here into other places in the county. I just wanted to come before you today and talk about some of the events that are going on here in Kings County. There may be events that I was not made aware of, or I did not receive an answer back from an inquiry on. And so on Veterans Day itself, American Legion Post 3, of course, is going to do their Veterans Day Ceremony at the Hanford Cemetery, down at the tank at 10 o'clock. Everyone is invited to that. That's down on the corner of Third Street and 10th Avenue. I think most folks in the area know where that's at, big green tank out there. VFW Nise Post 5869 is holding their 10th Annual Veterans Day Festival at Civic Park from 10 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. There'll be vendors out there, there'll be food, local NJRO, well, not NJRO, local JROTC units will be out there doing a competition. They will have a couple of different bands that are going to be out there, so we're looking forward to that. It should be a good event. My office will be out there with a spot out there. American Legion Post 100, in coordination with the City of Lamore, is doing a Veterans Day Parade at 6 p.m. on Veterans Day. And the Hanford Elks Club is doing a Veterans Day Dinner at 6 p.m., and they have asked me to be their keynote speaker, so I'll be there as opposed to being at the parade that night. On the 12th, Kings County Marine Corps League Detachment 455 is doing a Veterans Day Salute, and so that's the day after Veterans Day, and that's going to be at the Lamore Adventist Church at 10:30 a.m., and they've invited the public to that and asked folks to come out for that. So, if folks need any amplifying information on that, please contact me at my office. And so then the last thing that we want to talk about, but certainly not least, is our Operation Green Light for Veterans kickoff that we did last night. I think Dom is sharing his screen here and has put that up. And so, we came last night, when it started to get dark, we took some pictures. First off, I'd like to thank your board, I'd like to thank the CAO for his support and for admin support out there for Operation Green Light for Veterans. And once again, for folks that aren't familiar with it, this is a nationwide initiative that was started by the National Association of Counties. Actually, it started in the state of New York and was picked up by the National Association of Counties, and it's just to put a spotlight on veterans and some of the difficulties that they experience when they're transitioning from active duty out into the civilian world. And so what you see on the screen is a picture of our flagpoles here. The reason that we wanted to start off with this one, instead of bringing you up the drive coming up Mather Drive and heading north into the county complexes, because after all, even though we're honoring veterans with this, we're all Americans first, and so we wanted to show this slide. And so then the next slide is the Kings County Government Center sign, of course. That's lit up in green, and then the three lights that are in the island in the center there as you approach coming north on Mather Drive are also green. And then you can see the lights there, the building off in the background behind the Kings County Government Center is Building 7. This is a shot that comes up through the center. It was still fairly light out, so you can't see the green lights roll real well on this shot, but it gives you another example. And then there is, if you see where Dom's got his cursor on the right-hand side of that, is a sign that shows the graphic for Operation Green Light for Veterans. And then as you come up further, this is another sign that's right there in front of that tree on the backside of our Veterans Memorial. You can see that from there. And then I think our final picture is the other side of the Veterans Memorial. And this is very impressive. You actually have, I mean, this looks impressive, but you actually have to be there in person to see it. And so I think we're doing a great thing here. As I passed by the courts last night, I saw that it didn't look like they were participating over there at the courthouse. So, this will be the centerpiece for Kings County when it comes to Operation Green Light for veterans. And on behalf of the veterans of Kings County, once again, I'm grateful to your board and to the CAO. And I also want to mention Jim and Dominic and Jamie for the extreme effort that they and their crews have put in to making this happen, so, thank you.
Jim back there with that green light on, man, it really looks, he could almost be a movie star, the way he's.
Yeah, Jamie, why aren't you into the green light? And Dominic's still hiding somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, Dominic's, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Good luck with all of the events.
The next speaker card is Curia Martinez.
Good morning, thanks for being here.
Yes, good morning, board members, Curia Martinez, Administration. Just one thing I wanted to add to Scott's presentation is yesterday we were setting up for Battle of the Badges and public work staff, they said they had approximately 270 light bulbs they had to change, and it was pouring rain yesterday, and they were out there on ladders changing those light bulbs. It was a lot of work yesterday. Good morning, board members. We would like to make an announcement that we are hosting our Battle of the Badges blood drive outside. It started yesterday and will end tomorrow. We also partnered with Kings County Public Health, and they are also doing a free flu and COVID vaccine clinic right next door. Donors will receive a free lunch, and we have very, we have received generous gifts, and we have that raffle tomorrow. Winter months are crucial, and Kings County is helping fill the gaps with the blood drive. Yesterday, we did 60 pints of blood donation, 12 COVID shots, and 16 flu vaccine shots. Would like to invite your board and all members of the public, this event is free and open to everyone. Thank you.
Very good. They have appointments and walk-ins both, right?
Yes, appointments and walk-ups are welcomed.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Their speaker card.
Okay. And then we have Loopy too. You want to get Loopy in here? Or did?
It's Tal Eslet.
Oh. Yeah. Tal.
It's on the agenda.
On the item? Okay. Loopy, you want to talk about elections?
Good morning, thanks for being here. I know it's a busy time for you. It is, it is a good time. One, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Loopy, via Kings County Elections Department, just want to give your board a brief update on what we have going today. Today's Tuesday, Election Day, as you all know. Thus far, we have about 15,000 voters that came on and voted. I want to say thanks to all those folks that came out, and those that have not. You got to 8 p.m. today. Our vote centers, all seven vote centers and our drop boxes will close at 8 p.m. properly. So if you have not returned your ballot, please bring it in or show up in person, vote in person. We have 14,761 votes that's been counted, 363 early votes, which means people voted in person. Out of 363, 144 were in the first hour of today, between 7 and 8, and 27 of those votes are conditional votes, but we'll be open till 8 p.m. today. Please come out, vote, and take part in democracy. And lastly, I want to thank you for your support and for your vote of confidence. Appreciate it.
You want to model your shirt and your jacket?
Sure.
These are.
Take it off.
You know, yeah, yeah.
It's our Kings County shirt. We had a lecture shirt for every election, specific election jackets for our staff. We're working under this terrible weather. Well, actually, we need the rain, we like the rain, just not during Election Day. Thanks so much, appreciate it. So please come out and vote.
Very good. Thank you. You have any extra ballots?
They're called provisionals.
Anyone else, Catherine?
I do not have any other speaker cards. I do have written correspondence, and all of the board received the hard copy and electronic copy, and it will become part of the permanent record. The letter is from Jacob J. Westra from Tulare Lake Basin Water Storage District, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hands raised.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Valley, you have a unscheduled comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to be very quick to also add to Friday being Veterans Day here, and it's a day where obviously we're going to honor the men and women who served to defend and protect our country. Thursday's also the 247th birthday of the United States Marine Corps, so for any Marines that are out in the audience or our employees around the county, happy birthday. And, Mr. Chair, I wanted to read this quick prayer here. We have this challenge coin, it's Marine Corps challenge coin right here, and on the back, there's a prayer. It's the prayer of the Armed Forces. It's the Armed Forces Prayer, and very quickly it states, "Grant me the strength to do my duties and serve my country with honor. Please watch over me and remind me that even in war, may I keep clearly before me the defense of all human rights, especially the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Grant me the courage to face America's enemies with determination and velour." And, Mr. Chair, Kings County has a history of pride for their veterans and pride for the families of those that serve. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I want to take this Marine Corps coin for our birthday and the prayer, and as you as our chairman, I want to present this to you to carry with honor with you everywhere you go.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else, Catherine? Anyone, last call for anyone in chambers? See no one come forward, we'll finish up the unscheduled appearances and move on to the next item. And the first couple of items, a report out on closed session on the regular meeting from November 1st, and a report out on the closed session of the special meeting that was held on November 1st. And Diane, would you like to report out on that activity?
At the regular meeting, there is nothing to report. There is nothing to report from the special meeting either.
Very good. I like that, that's quick. The next items are action items. The first is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting November 1st.
Move.
Second. Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboon. Thank you very much. Additional questions, comments, or clarifications? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show, the minutes stand approved, and now the discussion on the minutes of the special meeting that were held November 1st.
We'll move. Second.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Additional questions, comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, those minutes stand approved unanimously as well. Thank you very much. Next action item of the morning is the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted by one motion at the request of any board member. Any item may be removed and made part of the regular agenda. Are there any questions or comments on the consent calendar this morning?
There are no questions or comments, a move for approval.
Moved by Fagundes.
Second.
Seconded by Verboon. Thank you very much. Any additional questions, comments, or clarifications? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show, the consent calendar stands approved unanimously by members present. Thank you very much. Moving to regular agenda items, first item comes from Behavioral Health to discuss an agreement with Kings County Community Action Organization. Anchong, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. Anchong Perry, Deputy Director at Hailville Health. This morning, the department is seeking approval of an agreement with Kings County Action Organization, as known as the KCAL, for the provision of mental health services for domestic violence survivors at the Barbara Seville Women's Shelter located in Hanford, California. Funded through Mental Health Services Act, this agreement is for behavioral to partner with the KCAL to provide mental health services for women who have or meet the criteria for serious mental illness and children who have or meet the criteria for having serious emotional disturbance. Through this program, KCAL staff ensures that individual access located, co-located mental health services, including intakes, assessment of individual, and intense case management, crisis intervention, create and complete case plan goals, and also provide additional resources and referrals to, for them to enroll in appropriate programs. Since July this year, the program has served 86 total individual, 67 being victims of domestic violence, and 12 women and seven children were homeless. The last fiscal year, the total of 305 individuals received services through the program. The source has been approved for KCAL contract. KCAL is the only shelter for women who are victims of domestic violence in the Kings County. KCAL also act as the owner and operator of the facility. As a result, individual and families of victims of domestic violence have a direct access to receive mental health service in a safe living environment. The agreement amount is 96,505 for fiscal year 2223 and 101,097 for fiscal year 2324. Both expenses and revenue for programs were including departments 2022, 23, adopted budget, budget unit 422200, Mental Health Services Act. The agreement is retroactively from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024. The agreement is retroactive due to increased volume of contracts the behavioral is managing currently and staff shortage in the contract units. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by the county council as to form, and the department here is to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Anchong. Questions, comments, or concerns regarding the contract?
So move. Second.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Valley. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, the item stands approved unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item comes from Community Development Agency, and that's a discussion on a report on the planning commission's activities. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of board, Chuck Kenny, Community Development Agent.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of board. Chuck Kenny, Community Development Agency. Come to you today to, this time, to report out the planning commission's actions from their monthly meeting from last night, which they had one item of business last night. It was for conditional use permit number 22-05, Westland's Cherry Solar Project, which is a proposal to do 250 megawatt solar photovoltaic power facility together with battery storage with capacity up to 1 gigawatt of hours. The project is to be located at 26620 Nevada Avenue, Kettleman City. The planning commission did vote unanimously to approve the project, and so it was approved, and that's all there is to report.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Kenny. Questions, comments?
Accept.
Moved by Verboon.
Second.
Seconded by Fagundes, thank you very much. Any other discussion? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show, that item stands approved and accepted, so thank you very much, Chuck. And, yeah, that's the first time I ever seen dry farming, seasonal grazing for rattlesnakes. You forgot the last part, rattlesnakes. That'll keep the vandalism down quite a bit. So, yeah. Thanks for doing that. The next two items come from Human Services. First is to adopt a proclamation recognizing November as National Adoption Month in Kings County. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Monica Connor, Deputy Director for the Kings County Human Services Agency. I cover the Chauwalford Division. The month of November is significant to children and families for it is recognized as National Adoption Month, and it is a time to promote awareness of the need for adopted families for children in the foster care system. Currently, there are 102 children and youth in Kings County going through the adoption process. This year, the Kings County Human Services Agency will host the first National Adoption Day celebration on November 18, 2022. This is a coordinated effort between the Human Services Agency and the Kings County Superior Court to finalize 22 adoptions with the Honorable Judge Jennifer Giuliani. A private celebration with the families will be held at the jury assembly room following the 22 adoption court hearings. We want to thank all individuals who make adoption possible for children and youth. Foster parents, relatives, social workers are among those individuals that contribute daily to this opportunity, and we could not do it without them. Adopting a resolution proclaiming November 2022 as National Adoption Month in Kings County will provide an opportunity for the board to honor those individuals who have opened their hearts and home for children needing a forever home. At this time, it is respectfully requested for the board to adopt a proclamation recognizing November 2022 as National Adoption Month in Kings County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Monica. Questions, comments, concerns?
Move for adoption.
Volunteers to read the... Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Peterson. Additional questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show, that stands unanimous, thank you very much. Good luck. The next item coming from Human Services, dealing with an overview of the local homelessness action plan.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Morning, board members. Asana Bed, Deputy Director of Human Services Agency. On June 7, 22, the Human Services Agency provided Board of Studies Session on Local Homeless Action Plan as a required of Accepting Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, Round Three Funds. And additional round funds are available. HEP 4 has been made available through the California Business Consumer Service and Housing Agency. Due date is November 29. The applicant's application for HEP 4 needs to be agendized as a regular meeting of the governing body that is open to the public and open to public comments before being submitted to CAL, CAL-ICH. The state does not require the governing body to take action on the plan and goals. I think we have a presentation right now for you there. This is an overview of Round Four presented by Kings County to the Board of Super. Next slide. This is a detailed plan providing continuum of homeless services in Kings and Tulare Counties, focused on racial equity, include the narrative snapshot along with quantitative measures. If you've seen this before, it's the same presentation we did on June 7. Next slide. As you can see right now, we, for our 2022 pit count, we have reduced from 1297 to 1235. As I told you last time we did the presentation, that we anticipated the number to be down from the last pit count done in 2020. Next slide. The action plan goals are to reduce the number of persons experiencing homelessness, reduce the number of persons experiencing homelessness daily, and reduce the number of persons becoming homeless for the first time. Number two is, number three is increase number of persons exiting homelessness into permanent housing. Number four, reduce the length of time person remain homeless. Number five, reduce the number of persons returning to homelessness after exiting to permanent housing. And number six, increase the number of successful housing placement from street outreach. Next slide, please. HEP funds are flexible and intended for service, intervention, and support in the following areas: assistance support for activities and housing deliveries, prevention and shelter, diversion into permanent housing, street outreach, service coordination, which may include access to workforce and education and training program or other services. Next slide. Also, we focus on interim shelter, rabbitry housing, operating subsidies in supportive housing units, emergency shelter navigation centers, and delivery of permanent housing and innovation housing solution. What we intend to use the HEP 4 for is rabbitry housing and delivery of permanent housing and innovation housing solution. Next slide. The goal strategies which been adopted by Kings and Tulare by Kings and Tulare is housing navigation, is increasing the housing navigation and incentives to landlord, utilize encampment resolution funding, utilize emergency housing vouchers, which we're using about nine or 10 of them for our sunrise project. Mainstream vouchers, MVP, utilize in project home key permanent housing, identify available resources, train community partners, utilize CAL AIM and work with providers, increase number of outreach workers, and re-instate drop-in events. This is our plan, if anybody has any questions. What we recommend then from the board is receive an overview of the local housing action plan as required for the homeless housing Assistance and Prevention Program, Round Four Funding Application, and receive a review of the application as required of the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, Round Four Application Requirements. There's no impact to the County General Funds as this funding opportunity is without match. And if you want to know the amount, it's, they haven't released the amount, but they think it's 12% less than Round Three, which we predict to be around 307,000.
Very good, thank you. Questions, Supervisor Valley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir, for the presentation. The question is, reading last week about the governor withholding $1 billion in funding for homeless plans around the state of California, indicating that the reason he was going to withhold that money was because he felt that the counties that submitted plans were just not doing enough. That being said, does that, any of that affect this funding cycle? Or has our plan been pointed out, singled out?
It does affect the HEP Three funding for all counties. We'd have in a meeting sometimes in the next two weeks with the state to understand exactly what they want. I understand what Governor Newsom was talking about is within the state of California, with all the money that's put in, there's only a, they predict a deduction of 2%. When we talked with the state first, we asked them, do we count the curve that the increase, based on the increase that we saw in the last 10 years, or we don't? So I think most of it is a miscommunication between between the state staff and what their goals, they intended to be. I think that will be resolved once we have the conversation with them within the next two weeks and understand exactly what are they requiring from us.
Okay, so then, just to understand, today's presentation is in regards for Round Four. When you were here in June, that was to submit a plan to go after Round Three funding, and that is the...
Same plan.
I get it's same plan, but going back to the Round Three funding that you came up here for in June, that, we're not getting that money right now because the governor's holding that money.
He's holding that money.
And we're going to go a step ahead, and you're asking today for Round Four funding?
Yes. Now, the money for HEP Three was supposed to be released sometime in December. So once we have the conversation within the next two weeks, hopefully, to their satisfaction, and they can release those funds, yes.
When he's talking about counties not doing enough, do you think he's talking about the huge counties? Or do you, do you think that...
I think he's talking about California in general. With all the counties, their deduction was only at 2%.
So then, would you say that our plan is planned to do enough?
It depends how you look at it, and I know that's not a politician answer. I think we need to revise ours, take the curve out and put it as a disclaimer. If we take the curve out, our plan is very ambitious. But the fact that they added that we anticipate, based on records from before, that the increase is about 20 to 30% of the homelessness, it reduced our deduction of overall homelessness. If we take that curve out and put it as a disclaimer, if that everything stays like which we hope it doesn't, then the reduction would be much lower, much higher than what we predict.
Yes, and I don't say that to put you on the spot. I'm asking you that to help me get a foundation of what I can say back to the folks who ask me that question. You know, obviously homelessness is a statewide problem. It's not a Kings County problem, a Hanford, Lemoore, or a Corcoran problem. But we all have that problem, so just from where I sit, it seems like the most of the homeless in District Two, I see in Corcoran. And so when asking if we're doing enough, and a lot of money is going into this, I do want to see some kind of change, and I know those answers are hard to come by. But, you know, in Corcoran, we have the one park right there, behind Whitley, the John Maroon Park, John Maroot Park. And there's just been a lot of problems there. The city is, you know, kind of stepped up some kind of plan, but it's being, the plan is being met with some hostile actions from the homeless people that have set up tents and encampments in there. And so, you know, going back to a simple change, the test is going to be where this park that was very nice, where our Veterans Memorial Building is at, you can't go there, you can't barbecue, you can't do anything because homeless just have tents all over the park and in the parking lot. So as we speak, there's an $8 million park being built in Corcoran that's almost done. It's looking very nice, the grass just went in. There's a $1 million Veterans Memorial that's going to be placed there here sometime around February. And so in Corcoran, when folks see me, they say, hey, Richard, how's an $8 million resort for the homeless, you know, coming? So there's, I mean, what's, it's hard to look them in the eye and tell them, don't worry, the homeless that are at this park aren't going to walk four blocks down to this brand-new park full of lush, beautiful green grass and set up their tents there. I tell them that, but I don't know how much confidence I have when I say that, except to know that I don't want to see that, and I don't want to see that encampment around this Veterans Memorial. So that's a simple test, so that's why I ask you, is our plan enough? And how can our plan affect not only all of Kings County, but affect something that in Corcoran, that I know is going to be a test here very soon?
So this is the first step of a long journey. It's just the... Our whole solution for the homelessness has to have four aspects. The first one is outreach. Kings County, we don't have a centralized holistic approach to outreach. Usually, it's individual organizations that do it on their own. So the last presentation we did for the collaborative, which the providers did, have addressed what we need to do to outreach, that it be centralized. It has two goals. One is to connect people to services or immediate needs that they need. And second is to connect them to services. The second approach that we need is, we need a shelter. A lot of the law enforcement, when they try to enforce some law or something, they can't because we don't have enough shelter to get people in it. So having that, that will assist the law enforcement. But at the same time, will assist those people that are on the streets, to give them somewhere safe where they can sleep. And also, you don't have that problem with the parks and the businesses. And city of Hanford has took drastic steps to make sure that people are not lingering into businesses and everything. The third step is the case management. We need to provide some of them have some mental health issues, have some drug issues, that they need case management to connect it to them. And the fourth step is permanent housing. So all that plan to be drawn together, we need those funds, and we are in the process of drawing right now. The collaborative is working hard and doing the outreach. The permanent housing, we did the two projects that should be ending hopefully by the summer of 2023. That's we're going to put 66 people, homeless people, into permanent housing and provide them with case management too. Outreach is a huge step. It's the first diagnosis process in knowing what the homelessness issues are, what the needs is. And that's what we're tackling right now. HEP Four itself is not going to solve the issue, but unless it's a collaborative effort, it's not an HSA. We took the lead, but it's not an HSA thing. The city of Hanford is getting involved. The Lemoore is getting involved. We'll be happy to talk to the city of Corcoran. Corcoran Two to find out what we can do over there.
Thank you.
So to answer you, I feel confident about the plan we have. I feel confident about the directions we're going to. We're still missing some pieces, but we are in the process of getting those pieces and getting everybody involved, including KCAL, including the police departments, including other public health and other departments within the Human Services Agency.
And I commend you, sir, and it's a tremendous uphill, I don't want to say battle, but it's a lot of work to do, and I know there's no easy answers. And I appreciate you, your due diligence on this. This is a serious agenda item. I want to make sure the matter got an opportunity to be aired out. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, sir. Greg Gatska would be your contact at City of Corcoran. All right, thanks, sir.
Louis Peterson, you have a question or comment?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, thank you. No, I think, you know, the governor's comments, you know, fly in the face of everything that counties have done. And quite frankly, you know, I mean, it's an election period, right? The guy's talking about, you know, says no to a national office, but clearly, you know, he has eyes on something else. And, you know, clearly, we know we have homeless issues, but until there's, the legislature takes action on providing some authority to counties. I mean, Care Court's a perfect example of, you know, the governor throwing out a bunch of plans, but there's no teeth in it, you know? I mean, you look at the mental health issues that surround homelessness, and still, you know, there's no mandate that says anyone has to walk into a court and can be forced to be helped. And until those responsibilities are defined and clarified in a collaborative way, I think from the state assembly and senate, we're going to struggle to, you know, meet these demands. And quite frankly, they're just demands. The guy's throwing a bunch of money out, and he's not given any authority behind him. And until he does that, we're going to struggle to meet any kind of line in the sand that he's drawn. And so I commend you guys, you've done a great job at addressing homelessness in Kings County. But the issue is much larger than the parameters that they've allowed, you know, and the authorities that they've allowed counties to actually make an impact. And until such time, it's going to be a struggle, so that's all I have. And with that, I would move for adoption.
Second. Moved by Peterson, seconded by Valley.
Um, additional discussion? Interceding none, will clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show, the, um, the two items have been received and accepted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Moving on to the next item, uh, comes from, uh, information technology. We have two items. First item is a maintenance agreement with Megabyte and the second is an additional lease purchase with Dell. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Chairman and your board. It's election day, couldn't tell.
You look very patriotic.
I'm going to work it, so.
Yeah.
I have it for you. The first item is the maintenance agreement with Megabyte for the county's property assessment and tax system. Back in September of 2020, your board entered into an agreement with Megabyte for a property assessment and tax system. The original contract only had maintenance maintained for the second year of the system or fiscal year 2122. And the county's tax collector's office collects over 110 million in property taxes each year that is distributed to 64 taxing jurisdictions, while the assessor values over 12.5 billion in property annually. The maintenance fee for the first year was $250,200 or $20,850 per month. Per the contract, Megabyte can increase the annual maintenance fees based on the consumer price index for the Pacific Cities and U.S. Cities Average, published for the previous December of each year. The new annual maintenance is going to be 267,017 or 22,309 per month, which is a 7% increase. The county can terminate the maintenance agreement with 60 days written notice. I also looked at the index. I'm glad that they didn't base it on June 30th because June's was 9.1%. So, um, don't have to tell anybody about inflation these days. Let's see. I don't think I need to read the background unless you'd want, want to hear it.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any questions or comments for John regarding the agreement?
The money was already built into the, uh, our current budget?
It was. And, uh, I do apologize for this being, uh, retroactive. It was placed in the contracts area of the budget and not in the, uh, managed contracts area, which we do watch like a hawk. So, this one actually slipped through. Anyway.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, I'm just curious, um, so the, the maintenance agreement, are you finding that you're using their maintenance, uh, or their maintenance is necessary?
Well, yeah, actually it's to maintain the program. So, basically, if you don't.
I get that. So, is it working, functioning correctly or are you having to call them and say, hey, we're having issues with certain systems?
Well, that would be better answered by, uh, one of the users. Chrissy?
Good morning. Thanks for, uh, answering one of the questions. Yeah.
Sure. The system is working very well. It's, uh, it's used by my office and also by the finance department. We do, we have since implementation had a few glitches along the way here and there and Megabyte's very responsive. They're responsible, I think, for 35 or 36 counties in the state, um, doing the property tax system. And so, they're always meeting to improve and implement new programs within the software. So, we feel it, it works well. But of course, there is always times that we need them, but they are very responsive.
Thank you. They maintain all of the updates and all of the other stuff that they do on a background that sometimes you don't even request. They just automatically do that, so.
Yep.
Additional questions or comments regarding Megabyte?
I don't watch comments on the decision.
Move by Verboon. Seconded by Fagundes. Thank you very much. Uh, additional discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show that that, uh, maintenance agreement stands approved unanimous by members present. John, would you like to continue and talk about the Dell Financing Services?
Yes, thanks. The next item for you is a personal computing refresh lease schedule addition with Dell Financial Services. In February of 2020, your board approved a five-year lease agreement with Dell Financial Services. This allows a portion of the county's personal computing PC equipment inventory to be replaced each year. Keeping equipment up to date is important to meet increasing security requirements without affecting employee productivity. Each year, we add more computers to the lease to keep older computers up to date. Fiscal impact, the first payment of $45,908 is included in IT's fiscal year 2022-2023 adopted budget in budget unit 1951, account 92057. The lease payable terms require additional payments of $45,908 for the next four fiscal years, '23 through '27. The total for all five years is $229,538 of this piece that we're purchasing. I will read the background here. The IT Department supports and maintains all county computer equipment. This includes the development of recommended applications for functional usage, the duration of use, and the timing of replacement. Working with administration, ITD put in place a plan to extend and smooth out the cost of replacing general fund computers. The plan is designed to better control computer inventory, extend the duration of equipment, even out the IT workload of installing new PCs and saving money. To accomplish these goals, IT recommends replacement of the user's primary device in the replacement program and spreads those units out evenly over the replacement cycle. Each user receives either a desktop, laptop or laptop as a primary device through the IT replacement program. The program will only provide replacement for the primary device. Replacing more units than this is cost prohibitive. Each year, IT will recommend a list of computers that will be slated for the replacement in the following fiscal year as part of the budget process. Once the list is agreed upon by admin and the affected departments and approved by your board, IT will present a lease agreement for your board's consideration, which is before you. This year's lease request is the second under this new plan. In total, there will be 99 computers that will be replaced under this program this year. I'm open for any questions.
Very good. Thank you, John. Questions, comments? Email a question? Text? Go move. Move by Fagundes.
Yes.
Seconded by Verboon. Thank you very much. Additional questions, comments, or concerns?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. No, no.
There was a note being passed and I wasn't.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, no.
Are you ready for the roll? I apologize.
No, no, I'm ready. I guess.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
I'm reading your mind now. I apologize.
No, no, and I appreciate that. Uh, that item stands approved. I'm in favor. Thanks, John. And I just didn't want to say yes and curious stick a needle in my arm or something. You got to watch her. The, uh, next, uh, item comes from the probation department regarding an agreement with Kingsview. Good morning. Thank you for being here and, uh, taking Kelly's place.
Hey, good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Caesar Serey and I'm a division manager with the probation department. The probation department is before the board today requesting approval to renew our agreement with Kingsview to provide substance use and mental health treatment services to probation youth for a term effective from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. This agreement between the probation department and Kingsview has been in place since fiscal year 2012-2013. Treatment services through Kingsview consist of one full-time mental health therapist and one part-time alcohol and drug counselor to work exclusively with probation, as well as one part-time office assistant. Kingsview staff work onsite at the probation department and at schools throughout the county to meet the treatment needs of probation youth. There's no fiscal impact to the general fund. Funds are received through the Youthful Fender Block Grant in the amount not to exceed $190,000, uh, which have been included in the fiscal year 2022-2023 adopted budget under budget unit 233600, account 92037, professional and specialized services. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by county council as to form, as well as reviewed and approved by risk admin. And if you guys have any questions, um, myself and Kingsview is available.
Very good. Thank you, Caesar. Questions? Supervisor Peterson?
Yeah, Caesar. Thank you. Kelly's not here, but she said, uh, I know it's late and, uh, don't take it out on Caesar. No, I, I don't have any questions.
Man.
Move for adoption as well.
I'll second. Uh, move by Peterson, seconded by Verboon. Additional questions or comments? Interceding none, will clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon? Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show, the item stands approved and tell Kelly you did one wonderful.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks. We do have a 10 o'clock, uh, public hearing. We're a couple of minutes early. Rather than divide anything else, uh, Supervisor Verboon just got up and left, so we'll just, take a two-minute, yeah, we'll, we'll take a two-minute recess and reconvene at 10 o'clock for the public hearing. Record show, it's now, uh, 10:02, um, and this is the time to conduct a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the Williamson Act. And so, Noel?
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Noel Tomlinson, planner with Community Development Agency, here to present the annual implementation of Government Code Section 51244B regarding the modification of the California Land Conservation Williamson Act program. In 1969, Kings County implemented the California Land Conservation Act program, also known as the Williamson Act. This act provided property tax relief to agricultural landowners who voluntarily agreed to devote their land to long-term commercial agricultural use through a Williamson Act 10-year contract or a farmland security zone 20-year contract. After '09-'10 state budget cuts all but eliminated subvention funding, Senate Bill 863 offered $10 million in subvention funds to be allocated to counties implementing a program that recaptured a portion of forgone tax revenue by decreasing Williamson Act and farmland security zone contract terms by 10%. Doing this would also allow landowners to retain 90% of their reduced tax benefits. In early 2011, SB 80 repealed SB 863 and the $10 million allocation to counties was removed. AB 1265 was enacted in July 2011 to reestablish the reduced year term contracts and the legislature amended Section 51244 to remove the previous expiration date and to allow jurisdictions to annually implement the reduced contract terms as necessary. In the past, the board has voted to implement the contract reductions from 2011 through 2021, effective for calendar years 2012 through 2022. If the board chooses to implement Section 51244B again, the county can recapture a portion of forgone property tax revenue by decreasing land conservation contracts by 10%, but still allowing landowners to retain 90% of their reduced tax benefits. In addition to staff time, the cost of implementation would include expending an estimated $2,000 for the two notices sent to approximately 1,700 Kings County landowners who are under contract. Staff recommends conducting a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding the annual implementation of Section 51244B, which allows for the 10% reduction in the Williamson Act and farmland security zone contract terms. If the board adopts implementation of Section 51244B, then it would be required to also adopt a resolution authorizing said implementation. That concludes my presentation and I can answer any questions.
Good, very good. Thank you. Uh, are there any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Hearing or seeing none, we'll open the public hearing for the purpose of receiving testimony regarding the Williamson Act, uh, reduction of 10, 10%? Has the clerk received any testimony?
The board has received no written testimony. There are no speaker cards and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised for this item.
Very good. Anyone in chambers? See no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back forward. Discussion by the board?
Moved.
Second. Move by Verboon, seconded by, um, Fagundes. Thank you very much. Questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Let the record show, that item stands approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Good luck. Uh, now we'll go back up, um, and take up the agenda where we left off and we will pick up the, um, Health Department that has three items. First item is to, uh, discuss a resolution proclaiming November 18th as National Injury Prevention Day. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Rosemary Rand, Department of Public Health. I'd like to introduce Serena Marsigan, um, from our MCH program who will be presenting the item to you.
Very good. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I am happy to stand before you today representing our maternal, child adolescent health program and public health to announce November 18th, 2022 as National Injury Prevention Day in Kings County. As well, we are fortunate to have representatives from Valley Children's Hospital, Mr. Tim Curley and Tal Eslick, who will have a few words to say after the proclamation. National Injury Prevention Day began three years ago to raise public awareness about injury prevention, particularly among children. Preventable injuries are the number one cause of hospitalizations and deaths among people ages one to 44 years and the leading cause of death in children. According to Safe Kids Worldwide, approximately 8,000 children per year lose their lives due to preventable injury. Annually, about 7.7 million children Annually, about 7.7 million children sustain injuries severe enough to require a trip to the emergency room. In Kings County, there were 4,751 injury-related pediatric emergency room visits in 2015, with the leading cause of injury related to unintentional falls. From 2015 to 2020, there were 33 injuries-related deaths of Kings County youth, with the five main causes of injury related to motor vehicle transport, assault homicide, self-inflicted injury or suicide, suffocation, and drowning. Injuries are preventable. Some tips to reduce falls include properly installing window guards to prevent unintentional window falls, keeping babies and young children strapped in while using high chairs, infant carriers, swings, or strollers, securing TVs and furniture to the walls to prevent tip overs, to reduce injuries related to motor vehicle accidents. Educate yourself regarding recent passenger, child passenger safety laws. This includes proper car seat installation and use, ensuring seat belts fit properly and all children are seated and properly restrained in the backseat until age 13. The Kings County Department of Public Health Maternal-Child Adolescent Health Program is asking the Board today to adopt a resolution proclaiming November 18, 2022, as National Injury Prevention Day in Kings County. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Good morning, Tim. Thank you for being here.
Good morning Supervisor. Good to see you, and good morning to everybody else. Yeah, thank you for taking this under consideration. Appreciate it. I oversee community and government relations at Valley Children's, and today I'm making the rounds. I was in Tulare County meeting with your counterparts there earlier, and I'm going to head up to Norfolk to go to the Madera County Board of Supervisors meeting this evening to say thanks. Thanks for just doing your part and raising the awareness around this very important issue that I think we take for granted sometimes. I think we're assuming everybody's going to be safely secured in a car, and kids are going to be wearing their bicycle helmets, and people will be securing their firearms at home, et cetera. But obviously, it doesn't happen enough. We have a very busy emergency department, we have a very busy trauma program, and we have a very busy injury prevention team that is out in the community a lot, just trying to make sure we're doing what we can to keep our kids healthy and safe. So thanks for playing your part. Really appreciate it, and I'll stop to see if you have any questions or comments.
Good. Thank you, Tim. Questions?
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks.
And I want to thank Tal, who is one of, we contract with Tal Eslick to help us with our community relations work, and Tal played an important role in getting this under the table. So I wanted to thank him for that as well.
Good.
And thank your public health team, definitely, for pulling all, pulling that great information together, the statistics. That was really helpful, so thank you for your support.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Tal, you want to say anything? You're good. With that, is there additional discussion from the Board?
No questions, comments, move for adoption.
Moved by Peterson. Seconded. Seconded by Fagundes. Thank you very much. Additional qualifications, clarifications? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show, that item stands approved. Thank you very much. The next item also comes from the Health Department. Consider gift cards.
That's the short version.
Yeah, that's a, you know, you want to talk about the rest of it?
I'll do that. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Everardo Legaspi, Assistant Director of Public Health. This morning, the Public Health Department is seeking your Board's authorization to purchase gift cards from Blackhawk Network Incorporated for incentivizing COVID-19 vaccine and testing. On April 13, 2021, your Board approved an epidemiology and laboratory capacity enhancing detection expansion funding to address the COVID-19 pandemic and future infectious diseases, disease outbreaks. That included $400,000 for testing incentives. On April 20, 2021, your Board approved an amendment to the California Immunization Grant, which included $542,000 for COVID-19 vaccination incentives. A sole source justification for Blackhawk Network Incorporated was approved on July 14, 2022 by the county purchasing manager that allowed the department to purchase up to $99,999 in gift cards. Kings County Department of Public Health is requesting authorization from your Board to raise the maximum compensation with Blackhawk Network Incorporated from $99,999 to $550,000 through June 30, 2024. The purchase of gift cards will allow the department to continue providing incentives as part of its COVID-19 prevention and services portfolio. A subsequent sole source justification for Blackhawk Network Incorporated was approved on October 31, 2022 for gift cards to be purchased following the county's purchasing policy. A purchase order with standard terms and conditions will be issued by the county's purchasing manager upon approval by your Board. Blackhawk Network Incorporated will adhere to the standard terms and conditions as stated in the purchase order. After conducting an extensive search for potential companies offering book order gift cards, Blackhawk Network Incorporated was found to offer book orders for multiple gas stations and vendors within Kings County that are on the state-approved incentive plans. Prior to the sole source with Blackhawk Network, the Department of Public Health reached out to ARCO to inquire about payment via purchase order. However, ARCO does not allow that process. The department then reached out to Shell gas stations, and we found, and we were informed that the purchase of book gift cards could not be accommodated, and the department would need to go through a third party. The Kings County Department of Public Health then contacted Blackhawk Incorporated, who confirmed they could provide book orders of gift cards and accept a payment via check and electronic payment, allowing a purchase order to be created following the county purchasing policy. This allowed the department to avoid the use of Cal cards for multiple individual transactions and to use a purchase order for items approved by your Board. COVID-19 testing surveillance continues to be an effective method for identifying both symptomatic and asymptomatic individuals who can spread the virus. The use of incentives for COVID-19 vaccination and testing has been found to be a successful tool for community participation of prevention services. The Kings County Department of Public Health seeks to continue providing vaccination incentives of a $50 gift card to those who receive a dose of COVID-19 vaccine, up to $100 per person, and testing incentives of $25 gift cards to residents who submit a COVID-19 test, limiting incentives to one per household per week. Gift cards are tracked and documented in compliance with state guidelines. The fiscal impact, $550,000 for gift card incentives is included in the Enhancing Laboratory Capacity Expansion Grant under Budget Unit 411300 and the COVID Immunization Grant under Budget 419600 of the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 adopted county budget. Recommendation today is for the Board to approve the purchase of gift cards from Blackhawk Network Incorporated to incentivize COVID-19 vaccination and testing through June 30, 2024, and to authorize a purchasing manager to issue the purchase order for gift cards from Blackhawk Network Incorporated. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Question? Supervisor Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question on previous gift cards handed out. You've expended all of your previous supply?
Yeah, yes. Nicholas Montoya is the program manager that's running most of our testing and vaccine services.
Okay.
Yes, Nicholas Montoya, program manager. Regarding the testing, yes, we have expended all our gift cards for that purpose.
Okay. I'm just curious, you know, I mean, there's been a lot of public information, I guess a lot of, a lot of new information has come through CDC and others that states that, you know, much of, many of the claims that were made with respect to, you know, testing and the shots have some big questions around them. And I'm just curious if you take this funding and you're not able to use it, I mean, it's only specific to COVID. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So if you're not able to, things have, you know, dropped off dramatically. What occurs with the funds? Does it go back to someone? Do you reallocate it somewhere?
That's specific to the state. As of right now, we have the approved budgets that have been approved to this point.
And I'll, I'm Rosemary Rand, Department of Public Health. Traditionally, when the state gives you funding like that, if we can't expend the money towards that end, there's options to either move it, like during MPX, Monkeypox, they allowed us to use some ELC funding for staffing, so they may reallocate the money to other sources, which if it's for vaccines and testing, they may enhance it for flu, but it's up to the state to make the determination of what they would do with those unspent funds.
Okay. No, I just, I'm sure the, you know, the demand, you know, clearly has fallen off and, you know, doesn't stay, say that, you know, there may be increases to come, but...
Traditionally, we see increases when the numbers go up, and when the numbers go down, you're correct, it goes down. We have maintained pretty steady with testing. I think Nicholas can attest to that, a pretty standard, but you're right. I anticipate the winter season going up a little bit just because of colds and flus, but then we'll have to assess going forward if we aren't going to be able to utilize the entire amount.
And so then, from hand somebody a card, they come in and say, I want to be, I want a COVID test. That's when you hand it to them? Or do they have to request it?
Yeah, when they come in for the test. And usually, the department, it's been on Wednesdays, and there's usually a line before we even open up. So the incentives seem to be working, and continuing to test is going to help surveillance just to see how much is actually in the community. And that incentive brings people that have some symptoms, any, or asymptomatic, but yet helps us keep track of the disease.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Additional questions?
Yes, thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So based on Supervisor Peterson's question, if the first allotment was expanded, so that's 99, it's just $100,000 there. So what, what does the data show us? What was the increase in the, I see we're at 49% fully vaccinated in Kings County, but where were we at prior to giving away $100,000 in gift cards? And I, and I ask that because do you have any preliminary, anything to base and give us an indication today that if we approve the $550,000, what we can expect?
So, so I don't have that, that exact figure. I think we can ask our epidemiologists to bring up that information. I didn't prepare that for this report. You know, what we've seen is that incentives do bring in more people to get vaccines, just the fact that by now even New York Times released a poll that, you know, stating that most Americans that were on the fence and whatnot already decided either way. Additionally, like, it was something like 90% of adults that have received a vaccine would not vaccinate their children. So we are going to see lower rates, yet we do see that when we offer incentives, we get some people as opposed to none other times. I'm sure we can check in with our epidemiologists and bring up that data, and I could provide that to the Board.
I think that's important to track this. Let me ask you this as well. The, so the $550,000, that's grant money the county already has, and you're just looking for authorization to go ahead and spend it? All right, because this large increase from $100,000 to $550,000, is it because you need to get rid of the money by a certain date, or lose, use it or lose it?
In part, most funding is like that. It's all slated for incentives, so there's not much more that we can move it along for.
So let me provide you some background, Supervisor. So the money was allocated for incentives, that total amount. Our purchasing agreement only gives up to 100, under $100,000 for the purchasing manager to sign. We've utilized that, so now we're coming to the Board to request to expand it to cover it, because we can no longer just go through a purchasing agreement and now requires Board approval. So the money was always earmarked for this.
And then if we get audited, you have procedures in place that track these gift cards?
So there's usually a checks and balance from the state and from our own department on how you give out gift cards, how they're being tracked and how they're being monitored. So there's a fiduciary monitoring, so in case we get audited, we can show who received gift cards when they were provided. It's, it's a bit tedious to do on the department's end, but it is monitored.
So, okay, and then based on that, is it just our Department of Public Health that's giving out these cards, or are you guys going to go and give another organization bulks of gift cards for them to do what they want with them?
They're provided at vaccine and testing events, so whoever we're partnering with at that time can also provide those gift cards.
Okay, but the gift cards aren't leaving your hands. You're going to be the ones responsible to make sure that if we get audited...
Yeah.
...that these were given out properly.
We catalog every gift card's number, serial number, whatever it may be, and then we track who it was gifted to, and also make sure that we're providing one per household per week, or two, up to two per individual total for the vaccines. So...
All right.
Like Rosemary said, it's tedious, but that's something that's required from the state, so.
No, thank you. I know you guys spent a long haul, you guys are doing your jobs. I just, I feel, one, that's a lot of, it's a lot of gift cards, right? The money's there, already the money's there, but I feel getting past the money, that it's a lot of gift cards, and just from fast forward to today, I don't have that gut feeling that this is going to increase much or drive people to get vaccinated, and the last thing I would want is these gift cards just sitting around and then someone getting in trouble later.
We would make every, take every precaution to make sure that we're, you know, fiduciary responsible.
Okay, thank you.
And then even children that receive the immunizations and testings are eligible?
Their parents get to get them.
Yeah, so they're, it's all tracked.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
If all our county employees that have county cars, do they go get a test, could they turn around and fill up the county car with gas?
The $10 one, you get two gallons. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Moved by Fagundes. Seconded. Seconded by Verboon. Thank you very much. Further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show, that stands unanimous. Thank you very much. Is it retroactive? Can I go pick up my card? Gosh, darn it. You mean I got to get another shot? Thank you. The third item from Public Health is dealing with maternal children and adolescent health agreement.
Good morning Chairman, members of the Board. Rosemary Rand, Department of Public Health. I'm here today with an item for a maternal, child, and adolescent health program. The MCH program is a core public health program, and its purpose is to promote the health of women of reproductive age, pregnant women, mothers, infants, children, and adolescents in Kings County through partnerships, empowerment, education of individuals, while funding and administering MCH-related programs and initiatives, and collecting, analyzing, and monitoring data related to the MCH population. The maternal, child, and adolescent health program includes funding for the Comprehensive Perinatal Services Program, which provides a public health nurse's time to work directly with local medical providers and obstetricians' offices, as well as the community, to educate and promote early comprehensive prenatal care to Medi-Cal recipients. It also provides funding for a public health nurse who serves as the SIDS coordinator and investigates and counsels families after an unexpected sudden infant death. In addition, the MCH program provides education on maternal, child health and wellness, as well as safe sleep and linkage to health and social services. The goal of maternal, child health is to improve birth and health outcomes for women, infants, and children residing in Kings County. This application agreement is retroactive due to the application timeline provided by the California Department of Public Health, MCH brand, branch. The initial application document was received by the county from the state on July 1, 2022. County submitted the documents that were required for preapproval on July 1, and we were provided approval from the state on August 11, 2022, and then went through our internal review process. It has been approved by county council, and we respectfully request the Board to approve the maternal, child, and adolescent health agreement and funding application, retroactive to July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, and adopt the budget change. I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Thanks.
Questions, comments, concerns?
No questions, comments, move for adoption.
Seconded, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Valley. Additional discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved unanimously. Thank you very much. You completed the trifecta today. You did good. At 5 o'clock, go ahead and take the rest of the day off. Just a little incentive, yeah. The next item comes from Public Works dealing with aquatic resource credits, and I wish we had the water. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department, before your Board this morning to request the approval of an agreement with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for the purchase of .36 aquatic resource credits to serve as mitigation for impacts that are caused by the county's bridge preventative maintenance program. uh, to serve as mitigation for impacts that are caused by the county's bridge preventative maintenance program, uh, project. Uh, on April 18th of 2017, uh, your board approved a consultant service agreement with NCM Engineering to prepare the plan specifications and estimate for bridge maintenance work on several bridges throughout the county. Uh, work on the bridges included, uh, methacrylate overlays to treat the deck surface, uh, repairing the asphalt deck approaches, minor painting replacement of minor, uh, components and scour mitigation uh, through the placement of rock slope protection. And this last item triggers, uh, through the environmental permitting process, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board Permit 401, uh, which requires the agency doing the, uh, bridge work to provide, uh, mitigation efforts, uh, for the work being done inside these, uh, uh, US waters. Um, the amount was, uh, the amount of point 36 came from, um, uh, county staff reaching out to the Water Quality Control Board and the United States Army Corps of Engineers, uh, to make sure we were, uh, covered on both of these permits uh, and be able, uh, to provide that funding. Uh, the funding, uh, total for the aquatic resource credits is 164,000. Uh, 88.53% of that is federally reimbursable. Uh, so the county road fund would provide the local match of the 11.47%, which would total to around 18,000, uh, coming from the, uh, road funds. Um, the permit is required through, uh, the NEPA and SEQA requirements for our project in order to proceed into the construction phase. Uh, so at this time, we would request your board approve the agreement, uh, with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation.
Thank you very much. Uh, questions, comments regarding the agreement? Don't move. Moved by Fagundes.
Second.
Seconded by Verboon. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, will clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show the, um, the agreement stands approved. Thank you very much. Good luck. The, uh, next item comes, or the next items come from, uh, administration with the first one being, uh, an item regarding the rural county representatives of Kings County. Mr. Hill, would you like to kick off the discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. The Rural County Representatives of California, our RCRC, is dedicated to the collective interest of its membership. RCRC is a 39, um, member county service organization that champions policies on behalf of California's rural counties. The RCRC Board of Directors is comprised of a member of the Board of Supervisors from each of the 39 member counties, RCRC staff work in partnership with the Board of Directors to deliver a rural perspective when legislation or regulations are being formulated. Their efforts help enhance and protect the quality of life in California's small and rural counties. The affairs of RCRC are governed by and determined by the member counties and through a single delegated, appointed by, excuse me, a single delegate appointed by the Board of Supervisors of each member county to serve on the Board of Directors. Today's, we're, today we are seeking your board's adoption of a resolution supporting Kings County joining RCRC and appointment of one board member to serve as the Kings County delegate and appoint one of, or excuse me, one board member to serve as the alternate delegate for RCRC. Also, Mr. Patrick Blacklock, President of RCRC, is also here with us virtually and would like to provide a presentation to your board. I'd like to turn over to Mr. Blacklock.
Thank you. I appreciate that introduction and thank you, Chair members, for having me today. I'm going to use, uh, bring up a quick PowerPoint here just to give you a sense of RCRC and our affiliate entities. Again, my name is Pat Blacklock. I am the CEO here at RCRC. And let's see if I can get this to. Is the slide showing up on your end? There we go. Got it working now. I wanted to start with this slide, which gives you a sense of the issues that RCRC is focused on based on a strategic plan that was adopted by our board last December. And not surprisingly, broadband, forests, water are the types of issues you see there. But it's the box in the right that I want to draw your attention to because that's our, their vision for us, which is to be the premier advocate and innovative service provider for rural counties in California. And it's that latter part I want to spend some time describing for you today. RCRC has long been known, I think, for our advocacy. And this slide gives you a sense of the types of issues that we are advocating for on a regular basis. Again, from the forest issues to water to agriculture. And in the bottom right, you'll see that over the last year, our board has formed three ad hoc committees to focus more specifically on drought and water resiliency, wildfire and forest stewardship and cannabis regulation. And those committees have been gathering information and data that they then use to update our policies so that we can have updated policies to drive our advocacy in those particular areas. And I mentioned them just so you can get a sense of the issues that our board has prioritized over the last year. I also, but as mentioned, I want to talk to you a little bit about our affiliate organizations. And Golden State Finance Authority is a joint powers agency made up of those same 39 counties, along with 56 of California's counties participating in different levels, including associate membership. And National Home Buyers Fund is a nonprofit entity that is similarly focused. And the focus is on providing affordable down payment, down payment assistance so that individuals can buy homes in our, uh, throughout California. And you can see within Kings County that 555 families have received assistance through GSFA and another 100 through the National Home Buyers Fund. On the right is a new program we recently launched to help county employees purchase homes. Because one of the things we heard from our member counties is that in their recruitment and retention efforts, their employees being able to buy homes was becoming an increasingly significant issue. And so this program provides up to 3.5% down payment assistance at standard market rates for individuals, for county employees of our member counties seeking to buy homes. And you can see that we've had individuals from Glenn to Imperial County buying homes through that particular program. Golden State Connect Authority is a new joint powers agency formed just last December to assist our member counties with broadband deployment. And you can see on the map, the counties throughout California that are partnering with GSCA to draw down the monies that are now available from the Public Utilities Commission. The first round of funding is known as local agency technical assistance. And counties can receive up to 500,000 in funding through that program to really do engineering to actually deploy broadband. The next tranche of funding that will be coming sometime in 2023 are the actual monies to assist with construction. So our goal with GSCA has been to put count, the rural counties at the front of the line for drawing down those funds so that they can get the engineering done and then be back at the front of the line when it is time to draw down the construction funds. As you can see, we've had, uh, 40 of the 72 applications submitted have come from our member counties. And we're anticipating that bottom number of 35 has actually gone up. And we're anticipating about $20 million is going to be coming down to our rural counties to do actual engineering. And one of the things that we regularly hear from them is they just don't have the resources to go after these grants. And so GSCA is, is, uh, filling that, that void by providing engineering firms, as well as project management assistance so that really we can do all, we can take the laboring or for our member counties to get that engineering done and make it really relatively easy for them to, to get that product and that outcome. Another affiliated entity is a nonprofit known as Rural Alliance Incorporated. This is a 501(c)(3) that is devoted to academic research and educational tours to really help enhance understanding of rural issues among policymakers and the public. RAI has been dormant for quite some time, but our board reinvigorated it over the last year. And we anticipate both educational tours and academic research being conducted in 2023. And in fact, RAI has received funding to launch that effort. So we're excited to see that begin here in earnest in 2023. Another entity is Golden State Natural Resources, and I promised there aren't too many more, but wanted to give you a sense of them as you're considering application. Uh, Golden State Natural Resources is another nonprofit entity and it's a very entrepreneurial one. It was established as a forest resilience company and it's really meant to help incent and get completed forest health projects in California. We know that there's a huge backlog of forest service promoted forest health projects that aren't occurring because no one is bidding on them because the, there's very little marketable biomass within those project areas. That is, there's not enough timber to make the project pencil out on its own. But there's a lot of biomass that needs to be reserved, needs to be removed as part of a healthy forest project. And these projects are stacking up for lack of anywhere to take that non-marketable biomass. Enter GSNR. GSNR has developed a business plan to take that non-marketable biomass and convert it to what's known as industrial pellets at one of two locations in California initially. And then once it's converted to industrial pellets, ship it by rail to a port. And then it would be shipped overseas to be used as a replacement for coal in energy production. And if we can get this project successfully launched right now, it looks as though it would pencil out and be in the black and be sustainable and thus be able to, uh, potentially expand and serve more sites throughout California. But really the end goal is to see those forest health projects be completed. GSNR is at a very formative stage right now where we will be launching our SEQA documents here in the next two weeks, hopefully. And the next six months in particular will be very telling in terms of pulling together the financial package because, because the goal is to reach what we know, what we call financial close in July and actually be moving into construction in late 2023, 2024. So this project's at an, at an exciting point. Two more to mention, or at least one more is Environmental Services Joint Powers Agency. This is a joint powers agency that has been around for quite some time. It helps 26 of our smaller rural counties with CalRecycle compliance and waste diversion compliance. And it was formed out of recognition that the smaller counties just don't have the resources to comply with with an increasing amount of regulation without some help. And so by banding together, they were, they are able to achieve economies of scale in meeting those, uh, regulatory requirements. So, uh, we're here today because Kings County is considering joining RCRC. And one of the things I'll say at the start is we're a little unique and that we're not out actively seeking new members. Instead, what our board has said is that it's really important that any new members, really that there be alignment from a policy perspective, because that allows us at RCRC to stay very mission focused on serving rural counties. And so I want to thank Supervisors, uh, Peterson and Verboon for joining our officers at a recent meeting to talk through that and to talk through Kings County's interests. I think that the interests that they described, including a, a focus on agriculture, do very much align with, uh, policy issues that are important to our existing board. And so we're at that next step in the process, which is for, uh, one, to note that Kings County is eligible. Our board has a policy position that says only counties with a population of less than 600,000 can join. Secondly, because of that alignment, uh, priority and concern, our, our policy does state that we ask the counties interested in joining affirm our policy principles on a four-fifth vote. And then ultimately, the RCRC Board of Director reserves the final approval, uh, on that process. So, uh, you've, you've met all the criteria in terms of population and interest and you're here today to potentially adopt the resolution. And then this is the final slide. It just shows the next steps that our executive committee will consider it tomorrow based on the action that you take today. And then assuming everything is still proceeding, it would go to our board on December 7th and hopefully have you positioned to be an active member in January. So that concludes, uh, my presentation. I appreciate the opportunity to, let me stop sharing here. Oh, there you did it. Appreciate the opportunity to join you and I'm happy to answer any questions or respond, any, any feedback you may have. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Questions or comments? Supervisor Valley?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, one, um, I think, uh, joining RCRC for Kings County is a long time coming. Um, I've been to a couple of events over the years, known that even though we weren't a member of RCRC. Sir, while you're on there though, could I ask you very quickly the, uh, difference in your model from CSAC where the president is actually one of the county supervisors? And I expected, uh, I, I guess I assumed the president of RCRC would be a county supervisor as well.
I think it's more of a title issue here at RCRC. We use the chair designation. So Supervisor Dan Miller from Nevada County is the chairman of the Board of Directors. And I think it's just sort of a private business descriptor where they say president and CEO. But for all practical purposes, uh, Dan Miller, Supervisor Miller from Nevada County is the chair and really much, serves much in the same way as the chair of your board, Mike.
Uh, thanks for the clarification. And then, uh, Mr. Chair, I think, uh, if Super Moon is, uh, willing to be our primary, um, he'd, he'd make a, a good representative of Kings County. And, uh, if anyone else is interested in the alternate, uh, if not, then, um, if council would be okay with, uh, uh, me, uh, making, including the motion for supervisor like Rusty Robinson, uh, to be the alternate, if he's interested, I think, uh, be a good, uh, position for him to get out there in, in Sacramento and, uh, help Super Verboon represent Kings County.
I think that, uh, making a motion, motion for Rusty Robinson would be appropriate so long as he's not required to take office or assume that until next year when he's actually a sitting supervisor.
We haven't been accepted yet, so.
That's the only thing that scares me. Giving them two names might change their mind.
Good with that, sir? You okay? Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, just very quickly, um, thanks for, Blacklock, for, uh, joining us today. Um, you know, we've been talking about, or we've had the thought process of, of going in this direction for, you know, a couple of years through, um, you know, some budget challenges and, and, uh, uh, just, I guess, leadership decisions. We hadn't, hadn't been that, but always, uh, appreciated, um, the thought process associated with RCRC. The, um, it, it just fits us so much better, you know? I mean, when they, you know, talked a little bit about in his presentation about, um, you know, broadband, we had that discussion last week. These are all critical issues to connection of, you know, rural members of our county, which, which are challenged with connections today. COVID exposed that, um, tradition, you know, expressly. And, uh, then you look at, you know, something that may not, you know, take your, put a check mark by it. But, um, you know, the Golden State Natural Resources, um, but when you look at the challenges to, uh, air quality in, uh, San Joaquin Valley, um, clearly managing our forests is an important issue. Um, you look at the fires that occurred in the last couple of years. Uh, one day of one fire creates more emissions than, than any, uh, other emission source in the state, uh, in a year. So, um, you know, I think we did, just aligns very well with, uh, with the county, um, as a whole. And, and, uh, their leadership has been great there, uh, you know, from what I've witnessed from the outside. They, they, um, have a great board, um, a great balance sheet. And, uh, I think it would be an honor for this county to join the, uh, the other, uh, rural counties of California in this effort. And, and, uh, you know, it's not, um, taking, uh, uh, hit it, it, um, CSAC, but it's just, I think it fits us better. You know, when you bring in the larger, uh, counties of the state, um, you know, sometimes rural counties, uh, voices are drowned out. And I think it creates an opportunity for, uh, you know, this rural county to have, uh, you know, a greater voice in, in that discussion. And, uh, so with that, with, uh, I would second Supervisor Valley's motion to, uh, uh, seek, um, membership and also, uh, uh, seconding Supervisor Verboon as a primary and Supervisor Rusty Robinson as the alternate.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Supervisor Valley, a follow up?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, well, I, I also just want to say that none of this, of my support for RCRC is against anything at CSAC as well. I, I would hope this is not the start or the intent to pull away from CSAC because that's not something that I would ever be in supportive of. I think we're doing good work at CSAC. Um, and, uh, the $12,000 a year investment to RCRC, what I'm going to be looking for over the years is a bang for our buck too. Meaning that I'm very supportive of this from the fact that the rural, um, San Joaquin Valley and rural counties as a whole, we are underrepresented in Sacramento. We know that the majority of assembly members and senators come from Frisco, Los Angeles, San Diego. And we have a very small amount of legislators, legislators up there, uh, to voice and more importantly, add up votes to bring home tax dollars back to the San Joaquin Valley. So that's where my excitement for this comes from. That's what I'm going to be watching out for. And I'm happy to help my colleagues, uh, in that endeavor. Thank you. Thanks for your time, sir.
Well, thanks for your support and, uh, with the work of.
Very good. Um, any other discussion? Seeing all discussion has ceased, uh, we'll, we'll, and it's been moved by Valley, seconded by Peterson. And, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved. Five in favor and good luck. And, uh, hopefully you can grease the wheels and go up. And Kings County is always in a better shape when Verboon is out of it. So anytime that you can move him to another spot in the state of California, we always look unfavorably in those, those times. So thank you very much for taking on that assignment.
I'd like to add that to my motion.
Moving on to the next item is to consider approving an agreement with the California Forensic Medical Group. And we need to vote.
We still need to vote, Mr. Chairman. I didn't, I didn't call the.
Medical Group. And we still need the vote, Mr. Chairman. I didn't I didn't call the vote? Did you? Oh, okay. Is somebody not paying attention? No, we didn't vote. I have five.
I made a motion and second. We could rewind the YouTube live video and play it back.
Okay. I I thought we had five. All right, we're moving on. Do we have a trained observer?
See, I've got several people questioning whether we voted or not. That's what's part of the question.
Mr. Chairman, I would just call it we reaffirm the vote. Just so we don't have to do it in special.
Five in favor. So yeah, it's session.
If there's any question at all, then let's just make it a matter of the record. I know we could go play it back, but why don't you just reaffirm?
Madam Clerk, you want to reaffirm the vote?
Déjà vu. Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon? Craig Peterson?
Aye, for the first time.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. By my tally, that's 10 in favor. So yeah, we'll we'll go ahead and see how that works out on the in the record. The next item also comes from admin regarding the California Forensic Medical Group. Curia?
Good morning, Board members. Curia Martinez, Assistant County Minister of Officer. The California Department of State Hospitals is responsible for returning the competency of individuals charged with a felony who have been found mentally incompetent to stand trial. Defendants are incompetent to stand trial are committed to state hospitals for care and treatment. Because of the high demand and limited hospital beds for treatments, the state has partnered with counties to open a program within the county jails. On November 19th of 2019, the board entered into a jail-based competency treatment agreement with Department of State Hospital to provide five jail beds for the use of the JBCT program. The DSH agreed to reimburse the county for the entire program at a maximum amount not to exceed 2.3 million over a three-year agreement. The county went out through a request for proposals to solicit vendors to execute the restoration program. And in April of 2020, your board entered into agreement with California Forensic Medical Group, also known as WellPath. WellPath is also the medical provider services for adult and juvenile populations that county administration oversees. This JBCT contract is basically an additional program to the in the incarcerated facility. The program does not impact the four other departments who fund the jail medical contract, as this program is fully funded by the state. The contract for the JBCT program with WellPath expired on June 30th of 2020. So yes, this is a retroactive contract with the provider, but the overall agreement with the state who funds the contract doesn't expire until the end of this month. Administration is working with a new agreement with the Department of State's Hospital to continue the JBCT program and is scheduled to come back to your board next month, aligning the two agreements together so there is no lapse. The program will expand to an eight-bed capacity. The amount of the agreement with WellPath is 53,000 monthly for the term of the period for five months and is included in the fiscal year adopted budget. At this time, we ask to approve the agreement with California Forensic Medical Group, Inc. for the jail-based competency treatment program, retroactively effective from July 1st of 2020 through December 1st of this year.
Very good. Thank you. Questions, comments, or any other observations dealing with the agreement with California Forensic Medical? Second. Moved by Fagundes. I missed the second.
Sue Peterson.
Peterson, thank you very much. Additional discussion? There are seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll? You want to call it twice this time or you want to just do it?
Like whoever needs to pay attention, pay attention. Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
And for clarification, IT did make sure there was two roll calls.
Yeah.
So 10 to 1.
10 to 1. Yeah. So, you know, yeah.
That's a strong message.
Yeah. Uh, this agreement passed five in favor. So, yeah, you only got five. So, yeah, I don't know. You want to you want to you want to stick a roll again? That way we'll get you up to 10? With that, thank you very much. Good luck. And it's only good for six months, huh?
Five.
Five months. Oh, yeah. Geez. That's an awful lot of work to go through for, oh, well. Matthew, you want to talk about the continued declaration of a local emergency due to drought?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Matthew Boyad, Kings County Administration. This is a continuing declaration of local emergency due to the ongoing drought. It has to be reviewed every 60 days. Your board initially adopted the resolution on April 1st, and it was subsequently re-upped again on May 24th, July 19th, and September 13th. And so every 60 days, we have to review. So we're before your board again this morning for the continuation of that local emergency due to drought. And I do understand that it's a little bit ironic as I'm here before your board this morning, given the recent showers we've had over the last several days. But nonetheless, that doesn't fix our drought issues or water issues. And we don't know what the rest of the season is going to be like. So we will continue to monitor precipitation over the next 60 days as we continue to continue to monitor the ordinance and will act accordingly. So with that, that continues my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes. Thank you very much. Additional discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley is not in his seat. Doug Verboon? Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
I want to cast a tie vote, too.
Mr. Chairman, very good. Duly noted?
I noted that. Thank you.
Let the record show the resolution stands approved. Five in favor. Good luck. You want to vote again?
Yeah, sure.
Moving on to the next item, consider introducing and waiving the first reading of an ordinance governing the extrication of groundwater. Matthew, would you like to continue?
Yes. So to continue the theme on water this morning, as we're all aware and continue to become more aware, is that the water here in Kings County is one of our most precious resources that without it, the very fabric and foundation of the county that we know and love ceases to exist. And so it doesn't only impact the agriculture industry, it trickles down to every single industry and facet of the county. So it's very important to the agriculture industry. You know, ag, we have $2.2 billion in total crop value. The land that the ag sits on accounts for about a fifth of the property tax revenue that comes into the county. And a quarter of the jobs in the county are directly related to ag. So water that supports the ag is very vital to the local economy. With that, the indirect impacts of lack of water also impact the social determinants of health that outline the quality of life and the access to prosperity here in the county. So outside of the ag industry, those in our most rural and disadvantaged communities are directly impacted via quality of life without sufficient water. So with all of that, it is being brought forward this morning, an ordinance to adequately manage such a precious resource to ensure the reasonable and efficient and beneficial use for everybody in the county, not just one particular party over another, to ensure that this precious precious resource is available for many, many generations to come. So with that, I just want to outline a little bit of the overview of what the ordinance is, and then I'll reserve the remainder of the time for the dynamic discussion to follow. So the ordinance before you is to govern the extraction of groundwater, very specifically for the purpose to export that groundwater outside of the county boundaries. So if one is wanting to extract groundwater and use it on their lands within the county for farming, that is outside the scope of this ordinance. So for those that do wish to extract groundwater with the purpose and intent to export that groundwater outside of the county boundaries, they will have to do so by first filing a permit with the county water agency. And we currently do not have a county water agency. And so until such time as your board delegates such authority, the community development agency will serve in that capacity. So a applicant will submit a permit to extract and export the groundwater. That application will be then given to the director of the county water agency. Again, as CDA serves in that capacity currently, the director role will be reserved for the director of the community development agency. So once the director receives the application, the application information and the director's findings as to the application will be submitted to the Kings County Water Resources Oversight Commission. And again, some clarification, the county does not currently have a Kings County Water Resources Oversight Commission. So until such time as one is formulated, the planning commission will serve in that role. So the permit will go before the commission for permitting authority, either approval or denial of the extraction permit. And the your your board will be reserved as the appellate body of the decision of the commission to either approve or deny any permit of groundwater extraction and exportation. And so your board will have the final say. And anybody can challenge a decision of the commission, whether it was an approval or denial. You know, they they can provide allegations as to why they they think they're in violation one way or the other. Again, that will come before your board for for the appealing body on that. So with that, all that's a very, very broad overview, I understand, on a very, very complex matter. But with that, I'll reserve the remainder of the time for more dynamic and in-depth discussion of various scenarios and situations. So and also, if I'm not able to answer any questions, I do have Sean Cash up here, County Council, did a lot of work. Thank you, by the way, countless hours in time, as well as County Council, in bringing this forward. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Matthew. Questions, comments, concerns? Sean's up and ready. Are you a new dad yet?
Working on it.
Working on it. The stork got hung up in the weather.
I guess.
Yeah.
Didn't like to fly in the rain. No, 14th. By the 14th.
By the 14th.
Yes. In the draft of the ordinance you have, when it was released with the agenda packet, the administration did receive a couple comments or just inquiries about what certain things meant. There was one section of the ordinance in particular, section 14C10, that the way that it was written in the packet you have, it raised a question of whether that list in Part B was an exclusive or inclusive list. It was meant to be an inclusive list. And saying that in more simple English, Section A says it is unlawful to extract groundwater underlying Kings County for export of that groundwater outside of Kings County, either directly or indirectly, without first obtaining a permit provided in this chapter. The ordinance that was presented has subsection B stating, for the purpose of this section, the following are considered extraction of groundwater subject to this chapter. It was brought to our attention that that list in subsection B could be interpreted as these are the only things that are considered, which is not what was intended. So I do have some draft language that I have prepared copies for the board and for anybody else in the audience who would like a copy of that draft. We can make additional copies as well. But the the new recommended reading of that subsection B would be, for purposes of this section, extraction of groundwater also includes but is not limited to. Just to clarify that those are things that are considered an extraction in addition to an actual anything else that would not specifically be excluded by other parts of the ordinance. So we wanted to get that distributed immediately.
Duly noted. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Are there other areas of concern or considerations?
I want to thank Sean and Diane and Matthew for doing this. This is, you know, public perception. We're not doing anything. So just kind of set the boundaries of what we will allow. And we're not stopping anybody from moving water. We're just saying if you are, we need to know about it. And we'll work with the DSA's to help them find any bad actors out there, kind of like a backdrop for them. But it's a long time coming. I want to thank staff for coming together. There's a lot of research put into this to make sure that we had a valid ordinance. And Sean worked hard on it. So thank you, Sean.
Mr. Chairman, I just a couple of questions.
Yes.
And I know we haven't had the discussion about the Oversight Commission. One of the major challenges with GSAs and the implementation of GSAs was conflicts of interest. We have a five-member panel. And I'm just curious how, you know, some of those may be public members. What are the voting requirements? And and how do we deal with conflicts if that is going to impact how the voting is?
Are you talking about for the the commission that will be the permitting body?
Correct.
Well, those members will be appointed as as it's currently structured. And I know that is the next agenda item. But to address your concerns, those members are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. So you'll be able to take into consideration conflicts as you appoint members. If on a specific matter, there is a conflict, then it would be the duty of that member to recuse themselves from voting.
Sure. I get that. But there could be situations where, you know, I mean, it's not a big community either. And those present challenges sometimes. So I'm just, you know, it's a simple majority vote. And if you've got two recusing themselves, then it's a panel of three majority?
Yeah, then it would be a panel of three. I wouldn't.
No, four. Well, four fifths is.
We can write in a four-fifths vote into the ordinance, but I don't think that it currently exists. But it would be a simple majority.
Okay. Thank you. Then, secondly, with respect to, so so it's the intent, anyone that, because we know there are many farmers around the community that are on borders that farm both sides of the border. So it's the intent of this to anyone, anyone that moves water either way across the border would would apply for permit, correct?
This allows for consideration of that. So for those that do farm on both sides, they're excluded from the provisions of this, to continue them to allow, you know, on one piece of contiguous land that the county line crosses right through.
So that would be contiguous, then?
Yeah, I want to be clear. And I know that, Sean, you worked on the ordinance intercutly, so I can have your support on this, too. But the ordinance, as it is, says that the water can be crossed boundaries up to a 10-mile radius from the point of extraction of that water. So it would allow for water to be extracted in Kings County for purposes of agriculture in a neighboring county or across the county lines, but just limited to that 10-mile radius. Sean, is there anything you want to add?
That is stated in the ordinance. There is a list of exceptions of things that are specifically not considered an extraction and not considered an export. To take those kind of things into consideration.
And it's my understanding that the ordinance also, within that exception, requires that the extraction to be from a farmer on one side to that same farmer on the other side. So it wouldn't be from one farmer to another farmer, but within the context of a single farming unit.
And that particular exception we're referring to does also specifically state that if it is a historic practice of that agricultural operation. So if somebody has been doing that for the last 10 years, that would be an exception. If somebody decided to do that subsequent to the passage of the ordinance, they may not qualify for that exception.
So I had known several circumstances. So you've got a landowner that leases his land out to a farmer, but he's that farmer's traditionally farmed both parcels. He's using water from one side to the other to go to a rented parcel that's covered.
Yeah. And that exception does also include leaseholds. It is not specific to a actual physical ownership. It does include leased property that is being farmed on both sides.
Okay. And I guess the other the other question is, so from what I'm understanding, you can farm both sides. You can ship water 10 sides, you can ship water 10 miles, and that's unlimited? That there's no, so it's not within the parameters of the ordinance?
For farming purposes, as prescribed, there isn't a limit on the water that you can use from one farm to another farm within the limits of the ordinance.
And so, I guess the big question today is verification, right? How do you, is that self-verification? How is the county going to verify everybody's plan there?
That is the big question. Enforcement and verification is going to be one of the most complex issues. Sean, you have some provisions in there. I think you might be more familiar with those provisions than me. Why don't you address that?
Well, at this time, we do not, as Matt said, we've kind of left the responsibility with the Community Development Agency for the time being, until such time as your board decides to create some or some other entity that is specifically assigned to water and natural resources, or assigns that to another county department. So they would be the primary enforcement agency, so whatever type of investigatory and enforcement means that that agency has at its disposal would be what we would have to use. A lot of it would, in real world, probably be based, complaint-based, rather than active investigation, just due to the manpower...
Right.
...that's available to the county.
Right. And that's what I was kind of playing out of my head is, you know, from a complaint standpoint, I mean, so if someone has a concern, they're going to contact the Oversight Commission if, once that is formed, there'll be, that's the process that they would, a concern citizen would take, or one over the fence, you know, the fence line to the other, because I mean, you know, one guy's farming next to another guy and he's exporting, you know, his pumps never shut down, and the guy next to him is, you know, has a whole bunch of surface water and wells, but he's, and he's using both. Just curious.
Once an allegation is made as to either somebody violating a permit or, you know, anything like that, there is ability in here for investigation, you know, with due cause, you know, from, you know, substantial evidence to go and actually verify that, you know, that is happening, and based on the findings of that investigation, then there are provisions within the ordinance to mitigate those in one way or another, so.
Okay. And so, and just in clarifying, mitigation, county has the authority to mitigate that misuse, if, once the ordinance is enacted.
Well, the county has authority to enforce its ordinance, and as far as mitigation goes, it's contemplated that permits will not be issued unless there are appropriate mitigation measures in place to make it so that it's not going to have adverse effect on the groundwater. And the county would have authority to enforce those mitigation measures.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm sure there's going to be a ton of questions in the community. You know, I stand with Supervisor Verboon and everyone that's worked on this. I know both Supervisor Nevs and Verboon had the opportunity to, you know, work through this process and bring, you know, this document to us today. As I've kind of shared with everyone, I think it's a working document. It's not a document that, you know, is cast in stone. It has to be amenable to, you know, the operations that drive this community, and, but I also think that, you know, we have a responsibility, I've expressed it several times, that, you know, while agriculture is our core industry, you know, the outside influences that have affected water supply in this community are not the fault of homeowners in this community or people in our cities, and it's, you know, the unfortunate outcome of the lack of leadership in Sacramento and, you know, an attack on rural communities and agriculture that have led us to, you know, an untenable situation where we're forced to enact an ordinance that may restrict, you know, agricultural operations, but at this point, you know, to protect all interests in the county, I think this is, you know, where we've found ourselves, and, you know, it's not a, it's not a, an enjoyable scenario to be in, and it's not going to resolve itself without some, you know, critical leadership at the state that is going to, you know, change the direction of water in California, but I think staff and everybody that's worked on this, and again, I, you know, as I leave the board, I hope this, you know, folks remember this is a working document and can be amended to, you know, meet the current needs of the community and the county and agriculture, everybody there within. So with that, thank you.
Very good. Any other Supervisors with comments? We have one comment from the public, and if you'd like to identify yourself and then continue with your remarks. Good morning.
Tal Eslick, switching hats, here on behalf of Westland's Water District. Just got a short comment. Westland's would like to acknowledge that the underlying policy supporting the proposed addition to the Kings County ordinance governing the extraction of groundwater with the intent to export that groundwater outside the county is consistent with paragraph H of section 1.9 of the district's serving as the Groundwater Sustainability Agency for the Westside SubBasin. And I'll say it in English in just a moment. Section 1.9 says the district will continue to prohibit unconditioned export of groundwater from the Westside SubBasin, so put simply, it's our belief that this approach is consistent with what the GSA is attempting to achieve. I appreciate Supervisor Peterson's comments that there's a lot of external factors that are impacting these things, and a lot of challenges that face both cities and industry in this region as it relates to access to water. But if nothing else, wanted to provide that comment from Westland's, and also say thank you for your leadership on this issue. It's good to see local government tackling it proactively, because it's going to be a challenge, and you're not getting a whole lot of help from folks outside the area. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, and I'll just ping Tal on that a little bit. One of the challenges we had in the original development of this ordinance was while many counties throughout the state do have a similar ordinance, and in fact, we used several of those as a template to help put this together, to the best of my knowledge, Kings County is the first to consider such an ordinance post-Sigma, so it's presented us with some new questions and some new challenges, and part of what we sought to do in putting this together is to work with something that would be compliant with the new Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, but also would be kind of a buttress to that, to support the GSAs and, you know, helping them manage their own basins. So the purpose of this is not to work counter to the GSAs and to Sigma, but to assist in that.
So that's the justification for when you copy somebody? Never mind. I withdraw my, I withdraw the question. That's, the plagiarism part always bothers me, but yeah. Since you brought it up, I thought I'd just put that on the record, but thank you for that. Any other questions, comments, or concerns about the ordinance? We have, very good. No, it's okay, just come up and state your name for the record, and then continue with your remarks.
Sure. Laura Brown. I guess we're just going to say that maybe this is a little bit of a surprise. I think the GSAs weren't aware of the efforts on the county, so as a Water Commission member, I think our last meeting that we held was that we were ensured that there would be more collaboration with the GSAs, and so I think you received a letter from T L B. I got a call from them about this, so hence why I'm here. But I think it'd be good to, I think it's nice that we're recognizing this is a draft, so there's a number of errors and inconsistencies in the language right there in the summary. It says that Kings County groundwater basins are not represented by GSAs, and so I think at this point in the process, we can all agree that we're pretty much covered in that arena. So, and then, I just want to encourage the connection with the GSAs and more collaboration as you were looking on a path forward, because there is a path forward. It's just a matter of working together, streamlining the process, and making sure that all voices are involved. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else with any comments?
I'd like to make a comment just in response to that. I know that there was some language in the staff comments for the agenda item, but that language is not reflected in the ordinance itself. That was holdover from the prior versions, and that was corrected, so we did address that issue.
Very good, supervisor Valley.
No, thanks for saying that, because my first question was going to be if that was true, if there's some errors in the language of this ordinance, because even if we passed and waived the first reading of this ordinance today, if you went back and you changed it, we'd have to come back to this step all over again, right? And reauthorize waiving of the first reading and starting the process over.
Yes, it's my opinion that those errors that have been mentioned today have been corrected, and if there is a motion entertained today to pass this ordinance, then I would ask that it include the amendment to the language of section 14C-10 that was distributed by Sean today, that would be included in the motion.
Very good. Thank you. Additional questions or comments?
I'll move for approval as amended.
Moved by Verboon?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Additional discussion? Hearing or seeing none, will a clerk please call the rule?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show, the item will be moved forward?
And waived with the reading.
Oh, no, I was going to have Sean read it.
I'm ready.
They were going to tag-team it.
Actually, we have Morgan Freeman waiting in the hall. Yes.
Okay with that, waive the reading?
Yeah. And, you know, I think, when's our next meeting? At 11:00. No, no.
29th of November.
The 29th. On the same wavelength today, yeah. Yeah. It'll be the 28th, correct?
The 29th.
The 29th. Yeah, so that gives more than a week to work on the language, should you find any other language and work with County Council to be able to, as long as they're not substantive, what do you call it?
If it's a typographical error or anything that's non-substantive, then it could be changed at the second reading. If there is a desire to change anything substantive within the ordinance...
Correct.
...then we would have to bring it back on the 29th and then have it heard again one time, following that with the language firmly set.
Correct. So, you have more than a week. It's, I haven't figured out the day, what is that, elect 11 days? What's the date? Today's the 9th, and there's 29th, so almost three weeks, 21 days, so if you do come up with any language changes as far as editing, we can incorporate that, any substantive changes, we'll have to come back, and we can go through this process again, and then they'll give you another week, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I mean, that is exactly, you know, this is a working document.
Correct.
It will always be a working document, and, you know, I encourage anyone that has comments to be here on the 29th and express those, because we want, we want to, I mean, it's a challenging situation, it's one that, you know, I feel this board has the responsibility to act upon, but certainly, public input is appreciated, so.
Yep. Very good. Did we vote on that, Kevin?
Yes, you did.
Just for the record, I wanted to make sure that we voted on that. So that one is complete. Any other opposing comments? The next item, which is going to be our final action item of the morning, and we are running a little bit late on, as Mr. Hill pointed out, we do have another meeting that was supposed to start at 11:00, but we'll see how long this item takes, and that is to discuss the Kings County Water Resource Oversight Commission. And Matthew, you want to take the lead on this one?
Yeah, so as talked about earlier in the previous agenda item, the groundwater ordinance that just passed on the first reading, section four states that until such time that there is a Kings County Water Resources Oversight Commission established by ordinance, the Kings County Planning Commission will serve in that role. And so, before your board this morning, is that ordinance to go ahead and establish the Kings County Water Resources Oversight Commission, and subsequently dissolve the current Kings County Water Commission? And so, there are some differences between the two bodies and the reasoning for dissolving one and establishing another. So the current commission that we have, it currently lacks a permitting and regulatory authority, so obviously, they wouldn't have the authority necessary as outlined in the groundwater export ordinance that we just talked about previously, as well as lacking a bit of the contribution to the drought and water shortage task force, some activities outlined in Senate Bill 552, basically facilitating drought and water shortage preparedness. And so, it's more of an advisory body as their foundational role, and so this new Kings County Water Resources Oversight Commission, it would be, you know, as our water issues have become more complex over the years, you know, we're needing to craft this body to handle some of those more complex issues, one of the main ones being the actual permitting body over the ordinance that we just previously talked about. They'll also still have, you know, their advisory roles into making, you know, recommendations to your board on, you know, things that they'd like to see as far as policy or legislation implementation goes. You know, they continue to investigate matters relating to water, but in addition to the permitting and regulatory authority over the groundwater export ordinance, they would also serve to actually develop county water policy and bring those policy recommendations before your board, as well as be that facilitating body for the drought and water shortage preparedness as needed per compliance with SB 552. So those are some of the differences in the current bodies and the reasoning for needing to dissolve one and establish another. And with that, I know Supervisor Peterson had some questions about the composition of the body, so I'll go over with that now. So it's a five-member body. Your board will appoint two commissioners, and those commissioners can be either at-large or they can be county employees, and so you can mix and match both, you know, both don't have to be at, excuse me, don't have to be at-large, both don't have to be county employees. You can, you know, have one and the other to fill those seats there however you see fit. One commissioner will be a city manager, director of public works, a community development director, or other staff in those departments from one of our incorporated cities. One commissioner will be a current board member of one of our community service districts here within the county, and the last commissioner will be a current staff or board member of one of the water agencies here within the county. So, again, as County Council mentioned, they will all serve at the pleasure of your board, and either one of those individuals can be changed via four-fifths vote by your board. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. And again, I got Sean here that did a lot of great work on this too, so thank you very much, sir, for that, here with me, so thank you.
Very good. Thanks, supervisor Valley, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I also have questions on the composition of the board. Just to be clear, all the appointments that you just outlined, as far as the makeup of the board, they all get appointed by the Board of Supervisors, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is actually one of the other major distinctions that Mr. Boyett didn't discuss between the new body and the current Water Commission, is that that body has five or six board appointees and three others that are appointed by other entities. These are all appointees of the board. They come from different areas of water and planning expertise. Different areas of, of water and planning expertise.
Thank you for the clarification. And then my other question was, does, okay, so the model of the makeup of the current water commission as far as the appointees of where they come from, is it the same or do we differentiate from that? Meaning the current water commission, are they made up of appointees from all these listed? Okay.
Now, the, the current commission is set up where each director or each member of the Board of Supervisors picks one member to represent their district. There's one at-large member that is selected by the entire board and then two are selected by the city selection committee and there is one that I believe is representative of the community service districts and public.
If I may add a little bit of comment on that one, um, because I want to make sure I'm answering your question. Um, there is some similarity in the composition of the board. It's different in the number, the, the former water commission or what, what would be the former water commission, um, was a much larger board, but it did have somebody representing cities and it did have somebody representing community services districts, though this one is only a five-member board and it still has somebody who's going to represent those different interests. Um, but it also has, um, the county, um, would have two members that are either county employees or from the community at large. So you would have broad discretion in, in selecting somebody, um, who's a county employee that works on water to be part of this commission or, or somebody who you respected in the community to exercise that authority for the board. Um, so it is, there is some similarity, but it's not an exact copy.
Okay, no, thank you, because what I'm getting, what I'm trying to get to that, if we're going to do this, then obviously let's do this right. And I, I want, I want to see some kind of insurance that, um, all, that all areas of the county have a seat at this table and the only way to do that would be by making sure there's a member from each one of our districts on this county. And, um, also, um, the, the ability to employ, to appoint an employee at Kings County, I don't know why, but that doesn't sit well with me just on, um, on the first, uh, just on the surface of that. Uh, I, I'd rather see that, uh, the language to say that the two commissioners should be selected from the community at large because to me that gives more of an opportunity, um, for the appointees, Mr. Chair, to come from a makeup, um, uh, from around the county, meaning, you know, I'd hate to see we appoint two employees that live within the city limits of Hanford, right? And then you have the appointee come from the city of Hanford, um, under the position of, uh, one of the commissioners can come from one of the incorporated communities. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want us to be in that position. I think this needs to be fair, this needs to be abroad, and I think that, uh, um, if we can't add the language that one, that a commissioner will come from each one of the districts today, if we can't do that, then I think, um, that I would ask that we strike some of this language to give a better opportunity, uh, for, for a fair makeup, uh, to come from that. And that would be by removing the language of an employee of Kings County. I would assume that, and from reading, um, uh, um, this background, that, uh, staff is going to come from the county for this board. And so, uh, the right people that should be at the table or at least, uh, in the audience to be at the podium to adding, get information, uh, coming, those are already going to be county employees. And, and, and I would just rather see, uh, commissioners not be county employees.
If I may address that, um, and those are legitimate issues and concerns, um, I'm going to say that I'm the one that, um, suggested, suggested there be an option for two members to be county employees and that was because of the, the nature of the, um, of the positions of the city representative and of the community services district representative and of the water agency representative. I wanted to have somebody with that stature have the ability, um, to be appointed to, um, have a voice on the board and I thought that that would most likely come from within employees of Kings County. It was consistent with that, um, with that rubric. So with that said, this is not the only way to go and it would be fair and, and legitimate depends on the pleasure of the board. If you want to change this, I think the composition of this board was the most difficult thing that I personally struggled with. But if you want to change it so that there are five members appointed and they're appointed one from each district within the county and we don't have the other requirement, say a, a city member or a community service district member, but they're just from each district within the county, then that's a legitimate way that we can go as well. It will be up to your board's.
I, I appreciate you stating that it came from you because if, let's just say, Mr. Chair, the board, uh, followed, um, uh, number one, under composition, um, where that was the option where on that day we're going to vote, it could either be two commissioners that are Kings County employees or two commissioners selected from the community at large. If on that day the board, uh, voted and appointed two employees at Kings County, there'd be zero commissioners from the community at large on this water commission. And, uh, I don't, I don't think that sits well. I think that, I think we need to, um, again, just get past any possibility that we'd be in that position, but, um, and then lastly, um, one, one, I'd like to hear from the board on that so we can get pro- real progress today. And then lastly, I would think that, um, if we could add language that, um, just to highlight the priority and the importance of the, uh, the appointees in this commission, that if there's two, I don't, I don't know what language you'd use, unexcused absences, uh, then that, that would cause for removal. And I, I think that to be that, to have language in there that strict would also take away the possibility that commissioners, um, aren't attending to the point where we don't have a quorum and then important, um, policies are getting withheld. And we know that that happens. And I, I think this would be, uh, an effective way of saying, hey, if you're going to be on here, you need to be in the seat on the days of these meetings being agendized so the business can be.
That's kind of why we had five instead of, you know, seven, because we have better control over it and we get to pick the people on anyway, so.
And Supervisor Valley, as part of adding the language, um, one of the things to think about in that is one of the, uh, first tasks of this commission will be to draft its bylaws and what you're referring to as far as unexcused absences is something that appears in the bylaws of our appointed commissions, so that would be something.
Got it.
Would be addressed at that point. Those bylaws clearly have to be approved by your board, so that, that would be something that if was not stated in the specific ordinance would still be something that you would have the, the ability to make sure made into their rules.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'm done. Is that something that you could take now and see if we could, uh, get some kind of agreement on the makeup of the board?
The, the other option is to add alternates, um, so that you have two, two people for one seat and the, uh, alternate would only be a voting member in the absence of the primary. And so, you know, uh, to set up that kind of structure, that way it, it would again, um, kind of guarantee a quorum, uh, because now you have ten people to fill five seats and hopefully those two individuals, both primary and secondary, will work together, uh, to ensure that somebody's there. That kind of spreads the, um, responsibility out as you're saying, so we're not typically loading it. Um, but I think that could be one alternative, uh, to have alternates, um, or proxies or however you want to.
Are you suggesting an alternate for each position on the board?
Correct.
Or a certain number of alternates to serve if we can?
I, I would have each primary have an alternate. That way you can keep that commission loaded.
Uh, what about the makeup, Mr. Chair?
I'd leave the makeup the same.
Leave the makeup the same.
When you say the makeup the same, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I understand and I'm following this conversation, the makeup the same as what's presented in the ordinance or the same as what?
Um, to, to address Supervisor Valley's concerns, that way you have, uh, somebody both county or, um, outside the county agency and so that you'd have two, two bodies for one seat.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, um, this is a, a, uh, commission that's approved by the Board of Directors, so, by the Board of Supervisors, so by a four-fifths vote. So there's going to be a, um, so-called negotiated, um, acceptance of individuals on this board because I, I, I have some concerns, like, like, under, um, Commissioner Three, you know, a member of directors, you know, from the community services district, Home Garden, you know, I, I have no problem if one of those is qualified, you know, but I, I think the, the, you know, the charge of this board will be making sure that there's five qualified, um, members on that board and there, there may be, there may not be, uh, you know, a qualified, uh, member, um, and, and, you know, I mean, qualification, but that is going to be the charge of this board, I think, to, to ensure that, you know, I mean, they have some knowledge of, 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 uh, you know, water and, and, I, I mean, I, I, it's, it's, uh, it's.
We interviewed, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Right, just.
Well, and the other.
To clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, this is a really good discussion. Like I said, when we were trying to draft this and, and craft, this was the hardest part and, I mean, we went with, um, what we understood would, um, was the desire, but, but also knowing that there are a lot of viable options, how this could look and that it would need review by the entire board. So it, it's, it's definitely, um, uh, I'm not surprised this is where the discussion is centering.
Mr. Chair, uh, could I add to C. Peterson's? I, I, I agree with him on that because, uh, you know, those CSD, uh, God bless folks that serve on them from those, those small communities, um, they, they work hard to just work within that small district that, that, that they got voted into office for. And if, if we had to pick someone today from Home Garden or Kettleman, uh, to be on the sport, I'm not sure that there would be someone experienced, um, to deal with these high, uh, level, um, water issues, which again is why, uh, I would be in favor of the, the makeup of this board being one member from each district here in the county versus this model.
The other part of that sentence also says commissioner or, uh, shall be a staff member of one of those member agencies. So I would, I kind of pictured that as being one of the engineers or somebody that's on staff of one of those special districts. So I thought we kind of covered that a little bit with that language, but if you want to change that, you know.
Well, and the only thing I would state is that if it's a staff member, that they reside in Kings County.
Correct.
Not a staff member that resides outside the county.
Correct.
So it could be, you know, you have a water specialist on your board or staff, but he doesn't live in, he or she doesn't live in Kings County.
Correct. Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, this is a, this is a important conversation. Again, that brings the possibility that you have, now you go with the staff member, right? If you went with the CSD board member, they're elected officials, so they're from that community, they're from that district. We start opening this up to the staffer, um, again, it's the opt, uh, adds to a high probability that this does not get spread out on the appointees. Let's say the, the engineer lives in the city of Hanford or the city of Lemoore. Now you have stacked up, uh, folks from within ci- city limits on this important board and, um, I don't think I can vote in favor of this model, um, if the insurance of, uh, fairness and representation, uh, wasn't included in this. And I think the only way we get there is by saying these five appointees come from, uh, one member of each, uh, district of the Board of Supervisors.
We have done now, we picked that member. So now we have, each one of us pick someone to come in here. You pick someone we don't like, we're going to do four to one, we don't want.
That, and that's part, then that's, that's a fair way of doing it. That's fair. But, uh, I don't think I'm gonna, I would hope that it won't be based on somebody you don't like. I would hope that it would be based on the fact that I would bring someone in here qualified. Yeah, I'm not just going to bring someone in here, because I'm, I'm trying to work with you, not against you.
No, no, and, and I, you know, I too, but I think that's the research that this board has to do on who they place on the board. I mean, I have no problem if there's someone from the Harmony Community Services, Home Garden, whoever, but they should have some, some qualification and, and in the, the event that there's not qualification under item three, that there's an alternate, um, there's some sort of alternate choice, um, outside of this group of members and that would, you know, for, for, you know, any of the, the, uh, four, um, identified, you know, groups that you're going to draw from.
Additional questions or comments from board members?
Just look back at how we did it last time. And, you know, I know I picked a member. Didn't show, didn't offer thoughts, I couldn't place it. Want someone more controlled with our board to pick somebody. That's why there's many people. We're limited on talent here in, in Kings County, so we're not really representing any district, we're representing the counties.
Yeah, and just to be clear, so I'm not trying to add, I'm fine with the five like you want. I'm just saying, one, two, three, four, five, one from each district and then that's the five.
All of them beat our qualifications?
Yes, sir. And then we would, we would, we would vote them in.
We bring one in under these qualifications, then we vote on them.
Yes.
Yeah, okay with that.
So if I understand, you each bring one in under these qualifications, meaning?
If you can't find one, we just vote on it anyways for somebody, you know.
You meaning each one is going to nominate, um, nominate somebody for each of the different seats and then we select one of the five nominees for each different seat?
Have a choice to pick his person on the, on the map.
Well, to recommend them and then the board votes to approve them.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Further discussion? Seeing none on the board, uh, Laura Brown has some questions or comments regarding this discussion and, um, welcome once again.
Thank you. Quiet. It is, it's kind of scary.
A slash afternoon. Um, good discussion. Thank you. Um, I, so I am currently on the water commission. I don't know if you would be interested in a little bit of a perspective, but, um, there's very little engagement from, from staff. You know, about every three months I get an email that says, we're not having a water commission meeting. So that's pretty much been my experience since, let's see, Supervisor Peterson, I think you brought me on when Sigma started.
Yeah.
And we kept showing up, the same policy meetings, and so I've been doing policy probably since that zero water allocation for various areas within my, um, my previous career. But, um, yeah, I mean, part of me, I think when I first saw this come out, I thought, well, why not just reshape the water commission and edit it? I mean, you're at a nice pivotal point in the calendar year. What if you just change the bylaws, mix it up to create more representation, the areas that you need to create, um, to meet the demands the state has put on you for some of their expectations? Um, so I think, you know, I can understand the needs that you need to meet here, but I will say that I wasn't, you know, there was no communication about disbanding the water commission. Um, so if you truly see no value in that going forward, um, I would probably encourage you to also develop some way of communicating with people within the water community here in Kings County. I guess I'll, I'll make a personal comment, I don't want to be on behalf of anyone, but I'm just a little worried at some of the disconnect that I'm seeing. So, I mean, we have GSA meetings, they are public meetings, there's no reason that, that county staff can't be at those meetings. Um, I'll say it's probably one of the easiest things you can do in water policy. Um, but I, and I don't want that to seem as criticism, it's just a way of need to increase the communication and the collaboration across all fronts. So, um, I guess that's it. I appreciate the challenges that you're trying to meet with this and I, I like that you're trying to create equal representation for each of the districts, um, and you're also trying to meet other standards that are set forth with some of the regulations that have been put forth. Um, but it does feel a little, little rushed, so.
Well, we've been, we've been doing this since, uh, I've been on the board for 12 years and each time we try to talk about it, it gets hijacked and poo-pooed and no one wants to discuss it. We've gone back to the water commission multiple times and each time we do that, they refuse to talk about it. I have a sign on my desk that says, you want to ruin a good idea, take it to a meeting. So, uh, we did, we, we weren't really secretive, we had people go around, talk to people, get ideas, but we don't want to harm them if they want to promote for me, want to promote groundwater, used to be, you know, meet segment requirements, so it, it was, I could only talk about it to one board member and I didn't want it to get out too much because it's just difficult to control, to get focused. And, uh, I think they came up with a good, good plan and we can adjust it as time goes on. We might have missed something and, uh, you know, I appreciate your, your thoughts. I mean, I, I see the same thing you, you're talking about, there's not enough communication. We got, we're going to be busy with water. We got, we're going to be busy with water, as you see, it's going to be number one topic on every single meeting you go to and everybody's an expert. And even if you are an expert, you've got four or five of them that are telling you you're doing wrong. And if Dennis has got his hands full right now, everybody's an expert, he wants to put his policy and everybody's attacking him. And so that has to stop, so we'll work on it with you and welcome your comments.
Yeah, and thank you for being here and, and thank you for agreeing to serve. I think, I think every board goes through a, you know, a process of, of developing itself or, or not. And I think, at this point, I think the board needs to, to shake it up, reorganize it, get it, get it active and, and, you know, I think we're, we're trying to create a scenario where, you know, we're going to have some oversight responsibilities and, and I don't think the board in its previous form would, would, you know, be able to, to meet that. And so I, I, you know, I don't, I thank everyone that serves. I, you know, it's hard to get people to meetings, you know, and, and probably county meetings are harder than GSAs because, you know, we're, we're talking about pie in the spy, in the sky sometimes where a GSA meeting, they're talking about, you know, actual occurrences and, and effects and, and, but, but I, you know, I think it's just, it's just time to, to reorganize the board and, and it's a perfect time to do it as we're doing this and, and certainly we want inclusion and, and, you know, we want the, want good people sitting at the table and, and doing that. And again, as I've said, you know, the, the previous document, this document, they're all working documents and, and, you know, I'm, I, I won't be here, but I know Rusty is willing to, to be open and to listen to comments and to, to adjust to, you know, whatever needs to happen to make it functional and, 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 you know, some of the stuff is, is, you know, that we have to deal with is distasteful and, and some, you know, think it's, it's an attack on them, but, you know, your responsibility, my responsibilities are different and, and today I think we have to act on best interests of the county and, and, you know, from what I've seen of, of the efforts, I think everyone's doing that. Everybody has an opinion of what's in the best interests, interest of the county and, and, but, you know, I take personally the, you know, responsibility of health and safety of, of this county and my responsibility is under that. And, you know, while, you know, I may have had previous occurrences in my life, this is in a whole set of different standards and, and, but certainly, in my view, it's, it's, you know, it's going to be inclusive and, and that's the only way it's going to, going to make any sense or function at all. And so, for that, thank you, your statements.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question for the point of procedure?
Yes.
That council, if, so how do we move, move forward here to be able to have the board have an opportunity to decide on going with the current model written up or the ability to modify within a motion to change and make up to one representative from each supervisory district?
Well, we could be extraordinarily formal with it and take a vote to pass or deny the ordinance. However, if it's a consensus of the board today, we could, we could take the instruction that you've already given and try and incorporate that. There seemed to have been a meeting of the minds, at least being between two of the supervisors here today, and we could try and incorporate that and bring a revised ordinance back for consideration on the 29th.
Pick five, we'll pick the one that fits the right area.
And we'll do this one for me.
Well, I, I think, you know, I mean, you've, you've created a guideline and, and, you know, some parameters and, and who should be drawn and, and I don't know that I see a necessity to remove it other than the board has the option to manipulate, you know, and, and if, if you feel that there's enough room within this document to, to go outside of these parameters, if there's not a credible, you know, applicant within there, you know, that the board can go outside of the parameters.
I think in order to allow the flexibility and, and to affect the, you know, the, this meeting of the minds today, then it's going to require some changes to the language that are not clearly identified today. I can't sell you exactly what those amendments need to be. And so we, it will take bringing the ordinance back one more time and then, and then a following reading after that.
So you need, for, in order to move forward today on change of the language to the board appointing one member from each supervisory district, you need one more board member to speak up in, in, in favor of that?
No, if there's no motion, then we don't have a vote today. So if nobody makes a motion.
Well, I'm asking you for what's the, the proper procedure. If it's a motion, then I want to make a motion just so it could be clear whether the board's in favor of it or against or, or, or opposed to it. But again, I just want to be clear, the, I spent a lot of time going over the parameters and I don't see the opportunity for equal representation from around the county and I, I can't be supportive of, of, of this action without that there. I think that's just, we, the county, we've always been like that in the past. We've always made sure that on, on important commissions like this, that we appoint one from each district. We do it for the planning commission.
We can take that direction without a vote if that is the general consensus of the board and, and I have a, and I, and I have that representation. It doesn't need to be a board action to give us that direction to bring something back that would affect that purpose. If I could just get a general head nod and a consensus of the board, then I would feel comfortable moving forward, making some changes and bringing it back on the 29th.
Okay. Good enough?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because it, it'd be real simple to say, under composition, the commission should consist of five voting members, one from each district and leave the rest of the.
And I'm, we could make that change today if you wanted. We could strike.
Forward, that's one three-word phrase that you could add to the composition and make that work, but I, I would still like to explore a little bit more of the alternative scenario because then that way I think you have a better, better option of creating a quorum and being able to conduct business when you have somebody that's an alternate that can sit into that chair.
Shows up.
That shows up.
Well, I mean, there could be health scenarios where, you know, someone is.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct. Absolute, no, there are many different reasons why a person can't attend a meeting, but I think, and, and until you establish dates, times and, and meeting standards, you know, nobody can really arrange their schedule.
I'm in agreement with that, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm just trying to be as clear as possible that that alternate, what you're suggesting is also from the district.
Correct.
That the quorum, when the quorum sits down, that there's a rep from one member of each supervisory district. I'm, I'm just trying to be clear and fair on, on what.
You might have two, you might have two because of where they live, what, who they, how they qualify.
Correct.
You can have all.
You could, well, you could have all three. They could possibly fit in multiple categories too.
Correct.
One member could.
I think that's a good story point.
So you're going to work on that, Diane?
Yeah, we'll work on that, we'll work on that and, and get something together that we believe affects the purposes and we'll, we'll move forward.
Okay. Anything else?
When it comes back, all that's going to be in language, it'll be easier for us to discuss and sort out because it'll be in print.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for entertaining.
Good discussion, Laura. Thank you very much for your insight.
You can.
All right. Any other closing comments, Sean or Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're all good?
My pleasure.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Go play in the rain now.
Enjoy while it lasts.
Exactly. All right. Board member announcements or reports, or you want to move to the other one? Catherine, what do you have time for?
Let's close out.
Because of, yep, so we don't have to move things around? Yeah. Due to technology and I, even though I realize that the other meeting is late, we are going to stay on this format, we are going to continue the board of supervisors meeting. We don't have a whole lot left, so we'll go ahead and wrap that up. We've now reached that point on the agenda where board member announcements or reports on their own initiative, board members can make brief announcements or reports on their own activities. Supervisor Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing big to report other than we have our air district retreat on Wednesday and Thursday. We'll have the Region Nine Director from EPA in the meeting with us to have a little discussion about their rejection of our PM 2.5 plan. Basically, that's it.
Good, thanks. Supervisor Ruben?
Last week, we also, with our OEM, our team, and learned how to brainstorm and come together in future emergencies. Then on Thursday, I was invited to be on a panel to discuss the walnut industry with five or six shippers and Congressman Costa and California Walnut Marketing Board New Director Jared Verlute, down on the panel discussed all the, all the problems with walnuts through harvest and how we fix it. All we got, thank you.
Good, thanks. Supervisor Bailey?
Two things, Mr. Chair. One, I know the next time I sit down, Operation Gobble is going to be over, so I just want to invite the board, please come out, hand out some birds. I'll, I'll have the schedule with Catherine. We're going to get the thousand invite letters printed out. We're fortunate enough to find a thousand turkeys and raise the money for it. Those, those birds went up to as high as $2 a pound, so very, very expensive this year. The $2 a pound turkeys average $30 a bird, you know, so crazy. So next meeting, I'll, I'll thank the sponsors who, who helped, helped make it possible, but love to see you guys out there handing out some birds here. So we'll get that going. And then for CSAC, Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM, please consider, I know Superboon and Sue Peterson have come in the past, we'll have the Latino Caucus of California County is doing a very nice reception outside of the, of where we're staying at that evening. I think that's going to run until about 11 o'clock.
More green and tacos.
I don't know what the menu is, but it's, it's always a good, it's good event, good place to network and meet supervisors from up and down the state. Rusty, come out and experience it.
Very good, thank you, Supervisor Fugatus.
I'm good today.
You're good?
That's my.
Need a second opinion?
That's my opinion.
I got, I'll have a second opinion if you want to.
Bad phrase.
It was, it is, it is.
Election day.
Ah, man. I, I too want to thank the fire department putting, putting on the OES training for elected officials. Those, those have gone on for, for literally decades. The, the only bad part is, you know, we used to practice burning down the hall in Stratford for years and then all of a sudden in 2003, it burned down. Yeah, you know, and it was good, we went through the training because we knew where the hydrants were, we know where the hoses needed to be, but it still lost the building.
You know, water.
No, no, we said water, we, yeah. But, yeah, no, that, that training is very important and, and very timely at a lot of, a lot of things. Kind of makes you think about incidents in a little bit different way. This is the last week for West Hills College Volleyball. They'll, they'll be traveling up north for their last away game and then they'll end up the season, season on Veterans Day at home. The Kings, the West Hills College Men's and Women's Basketball season tipped off, so those home games will be going on until February. American Legion Breakfast continues to go on on Friday mornings if you need a, a good place to eat. The San Joaquin Valley Regional Planning Agency's Policy Council had a special meeting on Friday and approved the funding for an application for the California Inland Port Infrastructure Program. I'm still not 100% sure on that process, but we will continue to watch it and that approved the application process to move forward. The California Association of Local Behavioral Health Boards and Commissions also had a teleconferencing meeting, talking about boards and cares and it kind of feeds into what our discussion was earlier with the homeless and affordable housing and how the loss of board and cares has affected many of the, the, the infrastructure that we need to be able to have to be able to house people and, and take care of them in a, in a good way. The Erode Crab Feed of Lemoore was on Saturday, very well attended, good food. On Monday, Mr. Hill and I attended the West Hills College Paramedic Advisory Committee. Anybody that's interested in attending that or being a part of that committee, we do need a public person for that that's not involved with fire EMS or the college. So that kind of opens it up to anybody that is interested in taking on the responsibility. The program does work pretty well. The cohorts are about 20, 20 students and the, the college has allowed them to expand out to 23 or 24 because there's usually attrition and so they don't always stay with the program. But the numbers are back up. I think they've changed some of the protocols as far as being able to take the class and then take your state boards and become a paramedic. And so if you're interested, that's a, a possibility. And then yesterday for lunch, Battle of the Badges kicked off. Kira talked a little bit about it. This is the 21st year of the campaign to build up blood supplies during the holiday seasons. As you can tell, you know, some people are sick, some people are traveling, some people have different events coming up. There's also always a need for blood and so thank you, everyone that rolled up your sleeves and donated to yesterday, today and tomorrow. And there are some wonderful raffle prizes for the you, if not to incentivize it any, kind of like the, the, the cards for getting a shot, but they are, it is an incentive and it does bring people out and it does give them an opportunity to donate blood and receive some very nice raffle packages. So with that, and I certainly want to thank Kira for taking on that responsibility. I know many years, Richard and I and Rhonda did it, three of us, now it takes seven of them to replace us. So, see, it's, but they do do a real good job and, and with all the baskets, we used to just feed them hot dogs. So thank you for doing that. I think it's very important for the county, I think it's very important for the community and you just never know. With that, Mr. Hill, you want to talk about board correspondence, upcoming events or future and future items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For board correspondence, there is none this week. For upcoming events, as you mentioned, the Kings County Battle of the Badges 3D event started yesterday and it will continue through Wednesday, November 9th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM each day at the old jury parking lot at Kings County Government Center at 1400 West, excuse me, West Lacy Boulevard. It has been moved inside due to weather. The county public health department will also be providing COVID shots and flu shots nearby. That will only go on through to today, but not tomorrow. Donate blood, get your flu shot and COVID vaccine, lunch will be provided for those who donate. The American Legion will be hosting the Lemoore Veterans Day Parade in downtown Lemoore on D Street. It will take place Friday, November 11th at 6:00 PM to honor all those who served and Blue Star Mothers. There will also be a Veterans Day Festival at the Hanford Civic Auditorium on Friday, November 11th from 10:00, excuse me, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Valley Can is also hosting a free smog repair event at the Kings County Fairgrounds located at 801 South 10th Street, Hanford, on Saturday, November 12th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. If your car fails their emission test, they will receive a $500 voucher to repair your vehicle. Please expect up to a two-hour wait. Gates may open as early as 6:30 AM. No diesel vehicles are allowed. Lemoore's Veterans Day 5K Run and 3K Walk will take place on Saturday, November 12th from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Race starts and ends downtown at the Veterans Park. This race is a tradition of showing support and celebrating those that have served. Registration is $35 and can be done online. The Fifth Annual Santa Rosa Ranteria Golf Charity Tournament to support SRR Youth Services will take place on Monday, November 14th at the Lemoore Golf Course. There will be a shotgun start at 10:00 AM and the four, excuse me, the format is a four-man scramble, team registration is $2,000. COS Student Senate will be hosting a free outdoor movie night on Friday, November 18th from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM at the COS Hanford Pavilion located at 925 13th Avenue, Hanford. They'll be showing a Charlie Brown's Christmas and Elf. Bring your own lawn chair and blanket, enjoy free hot chocolate popcorn and cookies. Hanford Parks and Recreation is hosting the Holiday Boutique at the Hanford Civic Auditorium on November 19th and 20th from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There will be handmade crafts and commercial vendors on site. The Lemoore Ducks Ultimate Banquet and Auction will be held on November 19th from 5:30 PM at the Lemoore Trinity Hall located at 470 Champion Street, Lemoore. Tickets can be purchased online and start at $70 per person, $48 for youth members under 17. Lemoore Parks and Recreation will be hosting a jingle and mingle tree raising and lighting of. Event on downtown D Street in Lemoore on Sunday, November 27th, from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM. There'll also be lots of shopping and entertainment for the family. For upcoming agenda items, Administration has one item for consideration regarding approval of an agreement with Civic Plus LLC. Human Resources has consideration regarding approval of an amendment to agreement with NeoGov. IT has consideration regarding a Tel, or excuse me, a Dell PC refresh. Probation will have consideration regarding approval of an agreement with the Counseling and Psychotherapy Center. And Public Works has three items, consideration regarding County of Kings Sheriff's Operation Modular Building Package, consideration regarding Laurel Avenue dedication, and consideration regarding CalRecycle City County Payment Program Grant for fiscal year '22 and '23. Departments do have till the end of the day to submit agenda items, so that list may grow considerably, since we won't be meeting till the 29th. That concludes our report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Hill. Any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Hill? As outlined, the next two meetings have been canceled, November 15th and November 22nd. The next regular board meeting will be November 29th. The board will be moving into closed session to take up two items. First item is significant exposure to litigation regarding the juvenile center, and the other one is to decide to initiate litigation, and there will be reporting out on the November 29th meeting on those two items. With that, I want to wish everyone a very nice Thanksgiving and Veterans Day. Travels as you participate in the CSAC Annual Meeting, and wish you well down there, and I hope you get, get to feeling better.
I feel good.
Yeah? You don't look good.
I'll be sitting.
It's on the outside.
When I'm there.
Yeah, yeah.
When I'm getting to dead.
Yeah, you guys sitting that close together, you guys will come back with...
He'll be partying, and I'll be stuck in the room.
Yeah, just add alcohol. With that, thank you very much, everyone. We will stand and adjourned after the closed session, and staff need some time to do the California Public Finance, so we will, thank you very much, everyone, for coming out, stay dry, appreciate the rain. Yeah, thank you very much.
Good luck.
With that, you want to do the switch over? Thank you.